Shall we say the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Uh. Are there any changes to the agenda? No, so. Hearing none, uh. Let's move on and take a quick look at the live district calendar.
All right, so this is Nicholas Handy Communications Coordinator for those online. I can't see me on the screen, but you can obviously hear me. Um, again, just as we normally do, just looking over the calendar for the month. And as you can see, it's a little bit more um busy, I guess than um normal. And we have a couple of events for all of our different schools. Obviously, we have deliberative session coming up um on Wednesday, so that'll be a big one. Um, we have some uh New Hampshire interim SAS um for the middle school. Family Fun Night um at uh GGS on Thursday. We have a band and chorus concert on the fifteenth for RMS. And then also, you know, the snow date on there for that. And then also another concert on the twenty first for RMS. Um, a number of uh middle high school events. PTA meeting. Um, middle school to convale for a CTE field trip. On the sixteenth, uh, we have some uh surveys going out on the twentieth. Um, an APR trip to Mass Moca on the twenty fourth. And then we kind of end the school year with uh. School week, sorry, the month with uh no school for the kind of week heading into March.
Okay, thanks. Does anybody have any thoughts, questions, or additions? All right, great. Thank you, Nicholas. And uh. This is our time for our first uh session of public comments.
All right, so it's me again, um, can be seen but not heard. Uh, policy BEDH is up on the screen right now. That's relative to public participation. Um, just make sure you understand that policy before choosing to make a uh public comment. Um, we don't have anybody physically with us today, but we do have an online audience. So if anybody on that online side would like to make a public comment, you may do so by using the hand raise feature at the bottom of whatever screen you're using. Press that button. I see a hand and I can acknowledge you. And if you could use first name, last name, and town of residence before speaking, uh, that would be greatly appreciated. And while we're waiting for uh anybody to potentially raise their hand, um. As uh John had stated, this is the first public comment session. We do have a second one at the end of the board meeting or toward the end. And that's another opportunity to make a comment.
Okay, very good.
Fair. I don't see anybody.
Okay, so uh we'll move on then from public comments. It looks like there's none at this time. And uh, we don't have our student representative with us tonight. So we'll skip over that agenda item and uh. Move on to superintendent's.
All right, our student representative is playing right now over at Concord Christian Academy as the girls are playing. In that they beat by one point earlier this year, and so I think that will be a tough battle. And so hopefully they're um doing okay over there and. I'm sure they're competing hard. Now, the. Several, several types of things have happened over the since the last time we met. We did, of course, have, I don't know what, three snow days in a row. Um, and that was a little bit different, you know, kind of going around that Monday. There's sort of that Saturday and Sunday, so the weekend, so it was an extra long weekend. We, of course, uh, were looking really closely at things on that Friday morning to see what was going to take place because of the wind chills. And I hope that. Um, we were very happy uh that we didn't have pipes burst on Saturday, so that's a very good thing. We have some um work that's being done underneath the Pratt in this school. That has to do with pipes and some broken plate, pipes that drain from the roof. So we were working on that, but that had nothing to do with any of the weather that we have had. We had some visitors come a couple of weeks ago or the beginning of last week, I think it was, uh, to the middle school here. The middle school, high school to uh from, you know, another school to be able to kind of look at what it is that we're doing. The work and the teachers, the administrators here and the learners are doing uh when it comes to curriculum, curriculum planning, assessments, instruction, expectations, grading. And so it was a really great opportunity for our staff, several of our staff, to um meet groups, meet individually with with some of these representatives from another school to be able to um show or showcase the really great work that they are doing. So that's really me. It's a privilege to have other people coming to want to see what we're doing here at our school, at the Jaffrey Ridge Middle School and the Conan High School. We also, since the last time, formalized our second partnership with Franklin Pierce University. That partnership, the first, is is similar to the first partnership in that it involves uh our schools, our teachers as mentors, or our district as a mentor, in a sense, or a location for learning. And also the students over at Franklin Pierce University. The difference is this, the the first one we uh created had to do with undergraduate learners. So individuals are coming into the uh field, just dabbling to see if they want to do it along with those who are, you know, two sophomores, juniors, and seniors, so they're doing their student teaching through our district. And the one that we just formed has to do with graduate students. So now we do have one graduate intern here at the middle school and high school. And that individual's um doing some great work. It's really exciting to be here. Uh, it sounds like she has quite the diverse uh workload that she is taking part in here from substituting to covering some classes to possibly running some clubs, maybe doing some uh extended learning opportunities with students. She does have a degree in the science area, which is really neat. Uh, maybe subbing for some of our science faculty at some point in time to be able to have, give them some opportunity to meet, do some more professional development, build their own curriculum and so forth. So it's really just a win-win situation. So we're excited. See how that goes over the next couple of weeks and then continue to try to um increase that. I know that there's been a lot of communication on the schools and over there trying to advertise for this possibility. Then WMUR was over at Ridge Memorial School last Thursday morning. And I believe it's, uh, I don't want to get it wrong, but Mark Griffin, um, in our community, they believe it's Sergeant Mark Griffin. Uh, Mark was a police officer that grew up in the area of, you know, Mary had lived here, lives here in Jaffrey. Kids go over to Ridge Memorial School, uh, had been away for approximately a year. And so they did a nice welcome back. The whole school community at Ridge Memorial School really embraced them. They had signs. It was wonderful. The kids were super excited to see their dad. Uh, and it had been such a long time and he was able to see the family and his one-year-old and his wife and everything else. And and so it was really just a heartwarming experience. The song that was sung by the elementary chorus, I think it's third through fifth chorus, was the age group that we saw. Or the grade, grade span that we saw, I think was the same group or one of the groups that sang at the Martin Luther King uh day here in in Jaffrey. And they were just on, they were, you know, just, it was just beautiful. Um, then they were a large group, so um it was really nice to see that, nice event. Nikki did a good job over there, and she wore her eagle hat. If you look at some of the pictures online that were posted on Facebook, it's kind of all got blur in the background, but you can see. Can see Nikki with her eagle fuzzy, eagle hat on. Um, that's the mascot of Ridge Memorial School. Uh, as it goes with the, we turn over to Jaffrey Grade School. Um, later on the agenda, you'll see the retirement notice that we put in front of you. Our longstanding principal Susan Josh Sarles. Um, I know that that's a, well, I just want to say a huge thank you to Susan, uh, having kind of done some. I would say uh. History researching within this community, within the schools, um, initiatives that have taken place and the really good things that have that have happened within our school districts. I'm saying our school district, not just Jaffrey Grade School. Um, I really see Susan's name coming to the forefront in almost all the areas. Here's a person who fought for after-school programming and got that, and some great things happened in that area. She fought for early childhood. At one point in time, it was full-day pre- kindergarten. There are still schools, some in the local region, still don't have full-day kindergarten. We've done that when um when it was something that we knew needed to be done. So and then, of course, her advocacy for younger learners with our preschool, our four-year-old preschool. So she was the one here giving presentations, leading the effort when we were starting to increase our preschool program and and continuing that. So those are enormous um shifts in education that have happened and that there's continuing to have to have to work on. Her advocacy has made its mark on this school district and this local region uh in such a big way. And so for someone who's been here and dedicated so much to her life and her her experience, um, I really want to applaud her for everything that she has done. Um, I don't think she's done yet. I think there's more in the advocacy and education for her in the future. That's up to her to um decide certainly, uh, but I think uh the journey that she has had here has been nothing but blessing this entire community in our school district. The good things that we are doing right now would not have been possible had she not been the strong advocate and leader that she has been over these years. So I'll add my time with that.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ruben or comments?
I'd just like to join in and say that uh Susan's been a mainstay ever since I've been here. And uh she's provided a significant leadership role in every uh activity that we've done together. And she's just a real amazing lady.
Here, here.
Yep. Absolutely.
Okay, well, we'll hope to see and hear more from Susan over these coming months.
Yeah, actually, Susan, if you're online listening, and I don't know if you are. Maybe, um, there's a lot of advocacy that can be done with the House of Education and the Senate. I was going to go into that uh and say there's quite a few bills that are, I would say, not necessarily pro-public education. And I know that public education is important to her, but, you know, certainly more individuals to get over to Concord and and do some work there would be awesome. Yes, Nick?
She does have, she is here and she doesn't have her hand raised.
Oh, okay.
Well, yeah, sure, please, Susan.
I think she, I think you said she had her hand raised to go to Concord and and testify on behalf of um expanding education freedom accounts. Is that the idea? Or maybe increasing charter school money? I hear that's popular.
Hi, I don't know if I'm live at this point. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I I so appreciate the kind comments and um. As I said in my letter, you know, my time in this district has meant the world to me and um continues to mean the world to me in the next months ahead. So we do have work left to do, and I intend to be here both ahead throughout those months ahead. And so just briefly, I wanted to thank you all for your comments and uh say I'm committed to a strong finish. And as Ruben said, looking to what's, what's next uh as far as supporting education. So, thank you. I don't, I don't know about testifying in uh Concord, but we'll see.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Susan.
Uh, thank you, Susan. All right, so let's move on then to our consent agenda. All right, so we've got a number of items on there today and uh. Do we have a motion? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. I second the motion.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Daisy. Okay, are there any questions or discussion? No, seeing none? Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that was six zero. And uh. Having finished with the consent agenda, I think we're ready for a presentation on the program and studies. Thank you, Davis.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us come tonight and um do kind of back-to-back pieces. The first is routine, but is really important to the functioning of our school and the program we offer kids, which is our yearly program of studies um kind of rollout and board approval process. Um, this year, we've made some changes that we wanted to highlight tonight. And um we're kind of asking, and again, with understanding that we'll accept whatever the board's decision is on this. We're hoping that we can get the majority of the document that isn't largely change approved tonight. With some of the larger changes, having another conversation in a couple of weeks, and I'll kind of get to that in a minute. But that's end result tonight. It would be ideal if we had the course aspect in those pieces kind of approved. If not, we can always come back in two weeks for that also. Um, but just to highlight some of the major changes, we kind of have three areas this year that we really focused on and how we went through our program of studies and looked at our course offerings and things like that. Um, one was really having our counseling team take a look at the career pathways again. At this point, they're a few years old, um, so this was an opportunity to clean up some of that language and look at the courses that are available at convale, um, keen other places to beef up some of the um, I guess, outlining of what those can look like. So that's one big area of change, general language, and then specifically the career pathways. We've continued to look at the alignment of our grading, assessing, and grade reporting practices with the district's I policies that we, as we've continued down that um sort of journey. And in particular, with the continued rollout of the strategic design and the impact that that has on learning, grading, reporting, and assessing in our school. And the third thing is something that our staff has really had a lot of conversations about this year, which is continuing to raise the expectations for learning outcomes as we continue to recover from COVID and look for ways to engage, inspire, and empower the learners in our building. So just briefly with the pathways and language, one thing that we recognized in conversations with the Student Services Department is that there is a current standing piece of policy IKF that we had not implemented a procedure for in our program of studies. And that is the language around a transition diploma. So this is language that's copied out of that school board policy IKF that we've placed into our program of studies. So it's clear that when this diploma option is appropriate, that we now have a procedure that aligns with the district policy. So this is what the policy currently says. Um, this is basically a four years or more of of time here, um, not being eligible for either the state core diploma or the Conan High School diploma and requiring the learner to meet all of their individual education plan goals. And this is the equivalent of a certificate of attendance, which is the state language, you know, that kind of aligns with this. So we don't anticipate many learners needing this, but every year there's a conversation about what this might look like for a learner who meets this criteria but is not eligible for um the coursework for a a traditional diploma. So that's one addition that we placed into the document this year. We also cleaned up and shortened both the reassessment and late work processes that are outlined in the program of studies. They were quite lengthy from the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year when we first began kind of reculturing our learners and staff around that process. Um, we no longer need a page and a half talking about reassessment. It's kind of built into the culture of our classrooms a lot more at this point. So we shortened those and made them a lot more, you know, around conversations with the teachers and the learners and things like that. We also took a look at the minimum course requirements, which were originally written for the seven-period day. And then the schedule changed after the program of studies was approved. So we cleaned up a lot of that section to align with block schedule expectations. So this grading and reporting area is where we're presenting tonight. We've been in conversation with our staff. We're not comfortable asking for the board to approve this language tonight. Um, we believe that this particular section needs some more dialogue with our staff and getting some more finessing of the language. But as we've continued to shift, and this year, um, we just printed tonight the Otis report cards, which are fully one-to-four report cards. So we're continuing kind of that journey of shifting our grading practices. Um, this is kind of the next step. Um, so the first section talks about, again, where we are in that process. This is language that would be in the draft program of studies that we're in the process of making the transition to what we would call a fair and equitable grading system that strips out non-academic pieces and scores those separately. Um, our teachers have gotten a lot more comfortable with the power standards they wrote and assessing specifically to those. And of course, the Otis tool makes that alignment much more clear. Um, this is continuing the work that this building began in the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. Um, and in particular, that transition to fully proficiency-based systems, which we really hit the ground running with this school year. What we're discussing and looking at as a staff is in that grade six through ten window, which next year we would like to no longer convert to the zero to hundred system. We were looking at two kind of changes to what we've been doing this year. This year, within each learning goal, these, we've been calculating using what's called the decaying average, which means that the more recent, the most recent assessment of a learning goal carries sixty-five percent of that learning goal's score. And the further back an assessment goes, the less weight it carries. Mathematically, there's a lot more value to using the mode for this purpose because that captures the repetition of instances. So if you have a learner who's performing at that level two, three, or four more consistently, this would capture that as opposed to a decaying average, which may not. So that's one piece that our staff is still kind of discussing. And the second piece, and this is the one that we're having a lot more dialogue around. It goes to that kind of raising expectations conversation, is the the pass requirement for a proficiency system being that a learner would need a score of two or above in each of the assessed learning goals by the end of the course in order to pass that course. So rather than having a percentage, because we're not using that any longer, looking at what that pass threshold per learning goal would look like. Part of the reason why we're advocating for that bold italicized statement to be the pass threshold is we've really culled out uh basically all of the non-essential learning for each of the courses as the teachers have worked on power standards. So if we've stripped out any of that kind of extra knowledge or extra skill set, that's good to have, but not essential. Our thought process is that that essential body of knowledge has to at least be in the process of developing for a learner to transfer that to the next stage of whatever that that content area may be. In other words, if we're saying this is the core material, that's all that's left that you absolutely have to have, but a learner has three or four of those as ones that they haven't even started developing, how can we in good conscience move them to the next content area, especially at the high school level, without remediating those those pieces first? So our staff is having some dialogue around this, discussing what sorts of of interventions we would need to make sure are in place. There's a lot more dialogue that we want to have before we ask the board to approve that change. But that's kind of where we're at now with our language and our process. This is the um excellent, more explanatory kind of proficiency descriptor that we have crafted and put into our program of studies. So it's just looks, points out the same exact one through four scale that we've been seeing, but with some language that's a little more clear. And with some examples that we've used with learners to help engage them in conversations so they can see again what this might look like. So we used a car example because that's relevant to pre-teens and teenagers to kind of help them understand what those different levels of learning would look like. And then we have stated from the beginning that we are not comfortable with upper class, next year's upperclassmen changing their transcripts on them as they're closing in on the end of high school. So grades eleven and twelve next year would continue to be assessed on the one-to-four scale. However, for those two grades only, we would continue to use a conversion chart to translate their grades into a zero to one hundred equivalent to make sure that their transcripts are consistent throughout um their time at at Conan High School. If we were to go with that language of a two being needed in all of the learning goals assessed in a course, that would translate to a seventy-two for passing classes at that threshold. And this is the conversion chart that we would propose using, very similar to the one we have now, but with some cleanup language, um, looking at level one and a half and below, which doesn't really exist in the this year's approved item.
So.
Yeah, so.
So I'll jump in and talk a little bit about the GPA and some other changes. So for learners on the four-point scale, we would still be calculating GPA, still determining ranking class based on that information. But we would look at the proficiency score. And for learners who are taking honors AP classes, that still has the same weight of one times one, one point one is how we configure that. And then for learners who are taking a college, career, or community-ready class, that would be multiplied by one. So we're using that proficiency score, so that three, that four, that two point five, and using the same um one point one or one, but adapting that to the four-point scale. You know, we talked a lot about credit recovery. That's something that we continuously have conversations around. Um, what can we do during the school year? How can we build that in? Not everything requires a full summer program for credit recovery. And when we're looking at um, looking at that two as aligning all of our learners and all of our learning goals to be at that developing stage of that two, identifying learners throughout the course, throughout the quarter, throughout the semester, throughout the year, who may be able to benefit from some type of credit recovery throughout the school year. So really being able to run our reports, look at data, figure out how we can best support our learners in real time versus waiting to recover something that maybe was a struggle first quarter until the summertime. So that would provide us with um additional information, providing additional supports, and helping our learners be successful in the moment. Um, once again, similar to GPA, we adjusted the honor roll scale, so stays the same for learners in um next year in grades eleven and twelve on that hundred-point scale, but also adjusting so that our learners that are being assessed on that um four-point scale also are recognized as being on the honor roll. And I think, I think David, you really hit on most of these. I mean, I think, you know, one of the things that was really important to hear from our faculty when we talked about this with them in a large group um last week was, you know, our our learn, we have amazing learners. Um, we can raise the expectations. We want to make sure that all our learners are developing and really moving towards that proficiency, that three, three-point O. That we, we want to make sure our learners have what they need in order to be successful when they graduate, no matter what they do, whether that is continuing their education, entering the workforce, going into the military, taking a gap year. We want to make sure that our learners have what they need, and part of that is really looking at that. If we want our learners to be developing and beyond, what can we do as a faculty and staff to ensure that? Um, and so really spending a lot of time engaging in these really good conversations about how how to support our learners and to make sure they can that reach that level and be successful. David touched on the fact of using the mode versus the decaying average. Um, you know, and I don't know that, I certainly can dive in a little bit more, but right now it's at sixty-five, thirty-five, where the most recent um assessment is getting that sixty-five. We want to have a better understanding of where our learners are are really at with their learning goals. And using the mode allows that, allows us to look at growth over time, really allows us to look at, um, you know, what we're seeing, what what the repeats are for them, how well they are doing, um, identifying um the areas where they're successful and not successful. The mode gives us a better handle on that. It really does. It it allows us um to better support our learners and grade ones and get a better sense of that.
Can I ask you a question about number four?
Yes.
What does that mean?
So I'm going to get to the English part. I can.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I can. Yeah, I'll speak to that in just a minute. So I'm sorry about the mode part. It just will allow us to look at the performance a little bit better, how they're doing on each of the learning goals. And so it's just configured slightly different than the decaying average, but gives us more information. We, we talked a little bit about adding the transition diploma per the um policy. But we're also realizing that a lot of our students are earning more credit than our twenty-three credit diploma. They're taking more rigorous courses. Um, we acknowledge the New Hampshire Scholar Program here. Um, and so we would like to, we're recommending, we're, we'd like to add a new, a scholar diploma. Um, and so we would like to, we're recommending, we're, we'd like to add a new uh scholar diploma. Which really aligns with the New Hampshire Scholar. So it's additional credit in some of our core academic areas. For example, in social studies, it's three and a half credits versus the three credits. It has a world language component. We'll talk a little bit about some of the changes in world language and number five. But all of our ninth graders are going to come in taking year three of a world language. So we, and they're getting high school credit for that. So that's part of that diploma. So we want to recognize students who are going over and beyond the traditional twenty-three credit diploma. Um, also with block scheduling, our learners are in with giving credit in seventh and eighth grade for high school classes. They're earning more credit. They have the potential to earn more credit. And we want to recognize that. So you'll find that in the diploma on the graduation diploma options.
Yeah, that's on page seventeen is that what the outline would be for that kind of scholar diploma, but it really is just encouraging more learners to. Seek the New Hampshire Scholar pathway, which there's all, we've outlined even below that many different New Hampshire Scholar pathways. There's, there's little reason why more of our learners shouldn't be taking advantage of that. It comes with some potential scholarship opportunities, some additional recognitions. Um, at graduation and on their diploma. So we've added that as a column really to encourage learners and families to take a look at that and consider it. With what they're already doing, twenty-eight credits overall with, as as Kim was saying, between middle school. Earning high school credit classes and now the transition to block. There's just more opportunity there for them to push themselves. And we want to encourage them to do that. So. That's not a policy change that we're asking anybody to make or some formal thing that will change on the diploma. It's just another column that we we wanted to add in there to highlight that opportunity for folks.
So number four, to get to your question. So we've had a pretty traditional track um in English where learners would take English nine, English ten. English eleven, and they had the opportunity to take that at the C, what we call the CCP level, which we're now changing to just CP. Which would stand for college, career, and really community ready um preparation courses. Um, and then at senior year, they had a variety of options. And in talking with and working with the English department, um, we want to add a little more voice and choice to what our, what our learners are doing. We um want them to have exposure to both fiction and nonfiction. We want them to be able to take courses that they're interested in. We want to challenge them in a variety of different ways. And so in doing that, we decided that we would give some, some um options to our learners in junior and senior year. With the requirement being that by the time they graduate between junior and senior year, they have to have taken one nonfiction course. And one fiction course. How they do that, whether that's in junior or senior year, that's their choice. Um, we still have the AP courses available, and one falls into the nonfiction and one falls into the. The fiction areas, so they can still take both APs as they've done in the past. Um, we are going to offer for students who want to take any of those CP English courses. Um, many of them are still the same courses we've offered in the past. We've added a few options. Um, we, teachers will work with learners who are interested in earning honors credit. So if students are consistently scoring in the four range, who are looking for more rigorous work, more challenging work, they can engage in conversations with your English teacher. To to talk about how they can have, get the credit for the honors um in those particular courses. So a lot more options, a lot more flexibility, a lot more choice um for our students. Still guaranteeing that they have a nonfiction and a fiction class. So we're actually really excited about those options for our students.
And if you're curious about what courses the English team has created and bundled, some of them are courses they were already offering just to the senior year that they've. Expanded um to meet a semester-long timeframe and pulled additional learning goals in to ensure it earns a full credit. So there's some of those. But they've crafted some new courses as well um that they're excited to offer and that learners have asked about. So this again, when we look at that alignment with the strategic design, building more learner voice and choice. Um, having flexible pathways, that the English team has really done a nice job taking that, you know, to heart and readjusting how eleventh and twelfth grade will work. And they they're emphasizing to both learners as well as the community that this is not a fiction class, does not mean it's easy. It's just a different type of skill set and a different type of uh material to meet that goal. So the options are on page forty-five of the program of studies. There's a list there. Um, some of them, again, we've had, but some new options that they were excited about under the fiction area, a mythology and folklore class. That's being taught by, would would likely be taught by our shared English and social studies teacher. So taking advantage of that split position was really good. He's looking down the road at possibly extending that into a social studies um carryover class in a couple of years, which would be wonderful. Under the nonfiction area, we've added a literature of witness course, which can help learners to meet the state requirement on genocide education. But also it's just a good course for anybody to kind of take advantage of a pop culture course that pulls in lots of pop culture. Sort of non uh fiction material into the class discussion and dialogue, which would be really exciting. And then an expansion of our journalism class. So they've really taken a lot of opportunity to grow those pathways, and I think it was a good. Ownership on their part to recognize the the changing needs and desires of our learners.
So we um last year talked with you a little bit about our changes to our world language program. Moving away from, you know, Spanish one, Spanish two, and Spanish three, to more of this year model, year one, year two. Year three and so forth. So it'll be a transition. So you'll see some overlap for a few years where we will. Introduce year three of a language, but still have a Spanish three, because we also want to recognize that there are learners. Who are kind of in that one, two and so on um phase, and we don't want to pull that out from underneath them, but. Um, kind of working backwards, we are lucky and fortunate to be able to offer to our learners advanced placement, French and advanced placement, Spanish. And look at the fact that we looking at language over a six-year period. And kind of working backwards. What do we want our seventh graders to have in year one? What about our eighth graders? Requiring all of our ninth graders to take either a third year of a language, or we do have Mandarin. So they could opt into Mandarin or French at that time if they wanted to. But ensuring that all of our learners have access to three years of a language. So it's, it's really spending time looking at. Where, where, where do we want our learners to be or have access to? And how do we work backwards to make sure that we're introducing? A material year one and seventh grade, year two and eighth grade and so forth. So it's been a really nice collaboration between the middle school. And the high school teachers, uh, having those conversations and allowing them to be able to teach within. Both the middle and the high school level classes. Um, so you'll see in the program of studies that we have kind of outlined that program too. Um, we had great conversations with the music um and art teachers, so the creative arts. Around the vision, we've seen a lot of growth in both of those um areas and both music. And art and finding a lot of success. And so working together to say, what is our vision? What do we want our students to have an opportunity um to have access to? What does that look like? Now, what we found with block last year, we offered a lot of quarter classes, really these quick classes, painting one, painting two, ceramics one, ceramics. Ceramics two. So with a lot of these quick quarter classes, it's a lot of transitions for learners. It's a lot of kind of stop and go in a short period of time. And what we're finding is that a lot of our learners were signing up for both. Painting one and painting two. Um, but when you offer those quarter classes, it becomes complicated to schedule. So you'll see that the most changes are just offering ceramics for a semester, offering painting for a semester. Um, kind of looking at the sequencing, kind of really looking at what we can do to for early awareness for our middle school students. So we want to make sure that all of our learners continue, um, you know, I always say kind of. Trying new things or um continuing the music and arts, which is really super important. What, what do we want to offer them as middle school learners so that um they get excited? They know all about the options and. So that was a really nice opportunity to work with the creative arts teachers to kind of move that forward. In the music department. I mean, they've been working with um the elementary schools, spending time kind of looking at how to grow the program. We saw significant. Growth in our program this year, and we expect to to see that also moving forward. So that's really exciting.
If I could just jump in and say a a quick selfish preview of the next presentation. One of the things that's been really beneficial as we've continued this six through twelve journey here together is rather than having a. A middle school art teacher and a high school art teacher, which is maybe the pre-two thousand nineteen model. We've been able to allow those, those, in this example, art teachers to specialize around the areas of art that they have the most skill in. That they can engage the learners most readily in. So now we have two art teachers who teach a variety of middle level and high school level classes. But they're able to specialize it around their interests, which is a big reason why, for example, ceramics has taken off. We have a teacher who is heavily invested, excited about that, has a lot of skill and background. And she's sharing that passion with middle school and high school learners. She isn't constrained to one grade span versus the other. Same exact kind of scenario with music, where we're looking at it as a general music teacher who teaches six through twelve. Different middle level classes, different high school classes, but all general music versus having Miss Swift, who's the ensemble teacher. Does all of the bands in the middle and high school levels, all of the chorus groups, the quality of those programs, as we've seen this year has gone up. And again, we've been able to engage more learners by having them specialized in the areas that make the most sense. So those are examples in our next presentation of taking advantage of the resources, in this case, the human resources in this building. To support improvements for learning as appropriate to each grade span in a way that isn't possible when you have this kind of artificial division between them. So. Just want to put that plug in.
It was really, I mean, amazing. I was in a ceramics class the other day and I, after I left. Um, the learners, when they finished their projects, were sending me pictures. I mean, they just, it was really exciting to see. Um, that excitement with our learners and all the amazing court. I mean, we offer a lot of opportunity for our learners. And they're engaging. The numbers are exploding in creative arts, and that's really exciting. Um, we are adding a sewing and fashion class.
Can we before we get to, can I go back to the art? Um, is there any art history or music appreciation built into those courses?
Yes, yes.
So they study, study major painters and major composers, stuff like that.
So we have, go ahead.
No, 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 no.
We, we've offered a more traditional art history and music appreciation class in the past and haven't gotten signups. So what they've done is focused or within our classes, there's a lot of art history. So any visual art class, the two visual art teachers have worked together to create some learning goals where they pull in artistic movements. If it's a design class, um, if it's design copy color, for example, they pull in a lot of art history there and embed it into the course. Um, and same thing with music, they kind of pull it in. They also created some specialized music classes that focus on high interest historical um. Music. So there's a music of Hollywood class that looks at the periods of Hollywood music. And the roots of rock and roll is another popular one that often runs. So they've tried to embed it where they can and then create sort of more high interest. Um, you know, specialized courses around that. And as the current teacher of AP European history, I will tell you, I also pull a lot of that into the social studies discipline because. It's highly relevant to the cultures, uh, excuse me, to the history you study when you look at the culture. So we try to weave that in there as well, the the social studies.
And and with courses like ceramics and painting, I mean, they're drawing that out. They're doing, there's a research component. So that's all included in that. Um, before they even get to the actual, you know, getting to the clay, right?
And that's fifty percent of the new sewing and fashion classes actually are history. She want the teacher who proposed that course. Wants to start off with helping learners do some research and understand the long, long history of fashion. And then having them do some of their own design work based around that and then teaching them how to sew and create. I think she has a five or six projects that she wants to do after they've pulled some of that historical knowledge in as well.
So we have, you know, you'll see in the program studies, we used to have something called fat, a department called fax and wellness that all has been combined under. Um, under wellness, that's the department. And sewing and fashion, sewing used to be a part of that um old fax class, and we did a lot of revamping. Of fax and bringing in intro to um cooking and making some adjustments there last year and advanced cooking. And so the sewing piece actually came out of the middle school classes. They do a little bit of it, but not as much as they used to do. So this brings that back, but it also brings that research, that history piece, understanding um about. Fashion, society, what plays into that, what, you know, what role that has in design, fashion, sewing. So this will be. Um, a quarter class that will be uh available to learners in grades eight to twelve. And really, this is. Because of learner interest in this area. Um, so that's, that's really exciting. Um, in addition, we're adding a half a credit of consumer math. I mean, one thing we want to do is continue to encourage all of our learners to take. Um, all of, you know, continue with their academic classes in each year, um, as well as in the um UAs. But we also ha- do have a fourth math requirement. All of our learners have to participate in some type of math-related class. That could be through STEM or science or math. And we're finding that even with block scheduling, some of our learners are doubling up, taking two math classes, so they're earning these credits. I mean, want there to be more option, same thing, voice and choice in what they're taking. And so this will be a half-credit. Class, consumer math class that also meets the requirement of financial literacy, where we have to have that embedded. In multiple classes, and this is a new class that will also have that embedded into it. So we're really excited to add this. I do believe that all learners can benefit from consumer math, right? Something that they will use after they graduate and should be exposed to. So we're really excited to add that. Um, and STEM, I'll just say we're really excited to have two really energetic, positive. Forward-thinking STEM teachers who already have explored the program of, it's uh program of studies. Given us a lot of feedback, looking to.
Seven-page vision. Yeah, for one of them already, that she's got all these visions for for looking at the pathways we have. Making sure that they roll out, making it, I mean, it's incredible.
It was incredible and it's really exciting. So, um. We are continuing to roll out the path, the STEM pathways and options as kind of outlined last year. But we anticipate that next year, that will be a major focus of the program of studies of where we're going with that and. Lot of really great energy around um around that and bringing that forward. So that's really exciting. Um, so, but we, so for now, we're moving forward.
There were several or are several um legislative changes that are coming into effect July first of this year. So one of them is the. Aforementioned financial literacy requirement. So we've added a new symbol to the program of studies. For anyone who's curious, it's a cash register. It's hard to see. But that's the financial literacy symbol. So any course that has that, um, will have learning goals embedded around financial literacy. And then the genocide um education sort of requirement is already embedded in the eighth grade um social studies curriculum. And we're going to make sure we have um explicit learning goals pulled into the eleventh grade US history curriculum as well. So that's how those two new. Requirements will be met. In addition to some extra courses for learners to get deeper into those. So that's the crux of our big changes. There's little language changes all throughout. We would not pepper you for three hours with those. We've spent a lot of time going through that. What we're hoping to to do tonight is have the board's um approval of the document in terms of the courses, the outline of the courses. Um, the graduation requirements, which again, there's no substantial changes, things like that. But not ha- ask the board to approve the grading policy section of the the handbook. The reason why we're asking for a split, if the board's comfortable doing it, is so we can begin the scheduling process with the courses. And then come back to the board in a couple of weeks after we've continued the dialogue with our staff. Um, in regards to next year's grading protocols within the school. So that's what we're hoping will happen, but if if the board wants to ask a lot of questions and not do anything with it tonight, we get that as well. We'd be happy to come back in two weeks and seek approval for the whole thing, um, depending.
Okay, well, this is uh, this is great. I had a lot of information of. Forbes, thank you for your questions and what else do we have in the way of questions? This seems like a.
Rating was currently in the online version that we received.
Yes, the draft that was attached to this does contain our proposed grading language, but that's what we're still kind of working through. So that the section that's titled basically grading practices or grading policies, that's the section we would ask not to have approved tonight.
And we would not be sharing that as part of the pro, if if the classes were approved tonight, we would not be sharing the grading policy piece with the learners. Um, until that's approved, we would just share the course selection pieces with the learners and families.
Can I just ask, what is in your thinking? What is the hard part about the grading policies? I mean, you've done a great job of explaining, but what do you think the number of the challenge is?
I think that there's. Teachers and the school never wants to put a learner in a position of feeling like we've set the bar too high. And I don't think that's the case here at all. I don't, I don't feel like saying you should be developing in all the learning goals and a course is too much, but it feels like a heavy lift because. Historically, you've had that average to fall back on. So, okay, maybe this learner really struggled in this one, you know. Forty percent of the course, but sixty percent they did well enough and they can move on. We just want to be super confident as a staff that we have fleshed out all of the structures for support and intervention. And the systems by which we could circle back to a learner who may miss it on a learning goal to make sure that they have every opportunity to pick that up and pass. We don't want to be in a position where we haven't looked at this carefully enough. And we have a learner who has one learning goal, that's a one and everything else a two or a three, and we don't have an answer as to how we're going to support that one. So I think philosophically, the staff seems largely on the same page. They believe that this is the right move to make. But we just want to be extra confident that we've really pulled all of the pieces apart and had a chance to connect all the dots to how we can support kids. So tomorrow's staff meeting, the first half of it is focused around continuing this dialogue. So I think, I think that's the hard part is not wanting to put a kid in a position where we weren't ready to support them.
So when you come back, right, will you have examples? So that we can see this student have these scores. This is how we calculate the mode.
Yes.
Okay.
Great. What we'll do when we come back, that's a, that's a great suggestion. What we'll do is we'll. Um, obscure names, take names out, but we'll pull some grade books from some learners and show that this is what the decaying average looked. This is what the decaying average looked like for the learning goals. This is what the mode looked like. Um, here's a learner who has. You know, a one and everything else is a three. So this is what we'd be remediating versus a learner. We, that's a great suggestion. We'll bring a presentation with just some of those types of examples to talk through, as well as the. The bulk of the staff's kind of strategizing session tomorrow.
Are you coming back for, when, when are you coming back with this?
I would, I, I think the next board meeting, not Wednesday, obviously, but sometime two weeks from now.
Okay. I, I like to ask, um, I'd like to be able to see. Um, I don't know how many seniors you graduate every year, roughly.
It's been wildly bouncing the last few years, but I'd say average probably eighty, seventy to eighty right now.
I'd like to see some sort of a, uh, chart of. Uh, the, the grade distribution when you convert these numbers. As you just said, you're still doing for seniors. In terms of how many graduate was, when a C average, B average, A average and so forth. Could you do that?
I think so, yeah, we could, we could pull that out.
That'd be good.
Yeah, so certainly the conversation about if a learner. Has done well in all these areas uh, within a course. And say, is this learning goal is struggling and has that, since that's never too, yeah. Um, either right now or um, maybe the next time. Would you be comfortable talking about the examples and support that would be put into place for those individuals? So that the board would feel comfortable moving forward. Cause uh, I mean, you and I, we've talked about this before, I'm extremely supportive of. Increasing the expectations for all of our learners. These kids are brilliant.
They're capable, they're certainly capable.
And have um, amazing futures ahead of them. And we have an obligation and should have a really strong desire to ensure that they have the skills that they need. Or to be successful, again, do what our mission says to thrive in their lives and communities. We didn't specify what communities, could be this community, could be other communities in, in general. Uh, wherever they go is kind of the idea that we need them to be successful. And so, uh, having, uh, you know, reasonably, reasonable and high expectations is very important. But when you enter the area, you've used the word, I think, I've heard it three times, I think. Ensure that that takes place. Um, that means that there's other things put into place when there is a struggle. So I don't know if you have any ideas already that are being put in place, being thought of, or do you want to feel, you feel comfortable just coming back?
So I'll say two things and then have Kim go. Um, I guess one thing I'll share is kind of the, the snapshot of why, of the why for this change. As we've been using learning goals, measuring them on the one through four scale, putting that a notice. Seeing that very clear breakdown of here's the things the learners are doing well in, here's the things they haven't gotten yet. One of the classes that I was cycling through, um, towards the end of the last quarter, so it's the last couple of days of the quarter. A learner was playing a video game on his phone fooling around. And I checked in with that learner and said, hey, what's going on? I, I think, you know, do you have stuff to do, et cetera? And the learner said to me, well, I've already done enough, I've already gotten twos and threes and all this stuff. I've got one goal left and I don't need it to do the class. And that goal happened to be a digital safety goal that was kind of instrumental as they all are at this point to the class. But essentially, the learner had figured out, you know, I'm all set. He was smart enough to say, I'm all set. I don't need this. I'm going to kind of move on. And that got me thinking and conversing with the teacher in that case and um, other colleagues and things like that. It's kind of what sparked the conversation as we looked at this change. How can we have a learner finish a course where digital safety is at the core, but they're not completing the digital safety learning goal? When everything washes out, sure, they'll pass the class. But we cannot en- ensure in any stretch of the word that this learner knows anything about digital safety because they've already figured out that they don't have to engage in the material. That to me was a big red flag and something we already know, but it was kind of the, the poster child example for why we need to have these expectations set by learning goal. So that's the first thing I wanted to mention. When our staff began this dialogue around this concept, they, they had two reactions that I'm aware of. One was, wow, this makes sense. And two, we, we know our kids can do it. It, you know, that's, that's the first thing. And two was. But how can we make sure that we don't miss anybody in the process? So some of the conversation around that right away becomes setting up intervention periods during the course, course of the school day. Which the sixth grade team has really nailed down at the middle level this year. They're grouping and regrouping kids during that transition period. Once every, you know, four or five weeks, based on what they're seeing in classes with learning goals. That's a beautiful model that we're looking at duplicating with others. Another thing that was discussed was looking, okay, if a learner isn't successful at the end of the course with one or two learning goals. Now you have one or two specific things that we can pull in some tutoring and finish. Versus saying you failed the class, repeat the whole thing because it's washed out in the average. Here's some specific areas that we can provide continued instruction. And then intervene to get them to, you know, pass the course and do well. So both during the day intervention period and a much more palatable, quick ability to recover those competencies. Those have already been a part of the dialogue that people have started having around that.
I would say that in some ways, we've practiced this a little bit this year with. Um, we share a document out with teachers from the school counseling team. That says, you know, maybe like two or three weeks before the end of the quarter, can you please let us know if you have any learners that are scoring below a two? And we don't, we haven't looked at it for each individual learning goal. Um, we've looked at it more as an overall course, but and we don't say, tell us, and, and a learner who's also scoring below a sixty-five. Um, because we want, we don't want to say like one, a one point three right now is passing. But we want to know any learner who's below two. Because that says to us that they're struggling, that something is getting in their way of being successful. That can be a variety of things. So school counselors are gathering that information from teachers. They're meeting with learners, they're meeting with learners and teachers. They're trying to support those learners to be more successful. And to make sure that they're passing the classes. And we actually met with the team leaders and said, next year, we were going to do that every nine weeks to check in on our learners. So we'd be getting that information sooner on a more regular basis. But then also reaching out to Otis to say, how can we run reports right from Otis? On individual learning goals that we could run weekly or every other week. So those conversations. Have already um, started and we already were doing some of that. So um, I think we would just build on some of those practices. So I think when you tie that all in, we informally. Have been doing those things and having those conversations. And now we're saying, okay, this is what we want for all of our learners.
And I would say we weren't ready to even have this dialogue, even as recently as last year, because the structures for how our teachers. Have time to collaborate, are able to collaborate, they just weren't there yet. And this year, the PLC work still has room to grow, but the, the teams have been consistent. They've been collaborating together. They've been dialoguing. And again, with the sixth grade, they've already set up a system of grouping and regrouping based on that data. That would need to obviously continue with this, so we don't lose anybody. But these are the things with our staff that we want to have more of a dialogue with them about. To make sure before we ask the board for that final sort of sign off and approval that we have a really solid plan and we don't leave anybody behind.
I was just going to make a comment that what you just described. Uh, that we've talked about personalizing learning for now, seven years. What you've just described, the process of saying, okay, we're taking this learning role, we have this every, every week. For instance, the uh, learning management system provides report, know where those individuals are. We know where the weaknesses are, we know where their successes are, we now have an intervention for that and so forth. And what you've just done without all the legalese of, of, you know, what would happen for a student who has an IED or anything. Is just discussed the, the foundation and, or even the operations of at least a portion. Of a personalized learning plan. Certainly, the pathways, a process that you're designing and building here. Is do, is adding value to that as well. Learners take different approaches like college courses or. Uh, internships or extended learning opportunities and so forth. Again, more personalization takes place in order to get to those learning goals, which is really key. And but just, but adding that extra layer of continuous data and following up. This data is right in front of the, the learner's face, which is important uh, in real time. And then it's also being talked about by the people who are supporting them and they're learning going forward. And that's fantastic. And that's an enormous. Um, leap. Uh, in a really strong way. So I'm just saying, all I have to say, I'm excited. So.
Um. So when I was reviewing this at home and I knew this presentation was coming up, I did a quick poll of the. Teenagers in my, in my life, not just in my household, but the ones that I tend to drive around on. Often. And one of the comments that came up was um, that the students feel that. They're missing office hours because that was an opportunity to go back and meet with teachers. And it sounds like as you're running these. Assessments or this, that, this data that maybe that would be an opportunity for students to go back to get that specific tutoring.
Absolutely, yeah. We didn't really get rid of office hours entirely. We kind of chopped it up this year to focus on that transition to block. But because we anticipated that the time would be needed and missed. We left fifteen minutes right before lunch and moved ten minutes the morning, so we can easily, without disrupting the whole day. Bring those chunks back together when we're ready for that. So I think that's part of the conversation for next year is. How we build, e- either next year or the year after, how we build that back in as a practice, um, and, and provide that intervention. Because as, as the year wound down last year, it became, it, it was not utilized very well. It became a chasing kids around the building kind of zone. We just didn't have the systems for it.
Sure.
You're exactly right.
Yes.
Um, at the risk of sounding self-serving and uh. I would like to point out, um, what I'm seeing as a missed opportunity, maybe I'm mistaken, maybe it's just not documented. Um, as I'm looking at your course, uh. Thing for middle high school, I'm seeing library mentioned three times, all on page thirteen and all with a storage place.
So seeing what?
Library.
Correct.
Mentioned three times, all on page thirteen and all as a storage facility for students who either. Get privileges or if they get those privileges revoked, then they're assigned to it. All the districts nearly surrounding us have library skills, digital literacy classes. The librarian, the school librarian is a teacher, like it's a teaching degree. I don't understand why this teacher is not being utilized, especially with the increase in more specific. English classes. I don't know why this district does not have a library skills, research skills. And digital literacy, which is right now New Hampshire requirement. I'm looking at the STEM classes and I'm seeing robotics and web design, but I'm not seeing media letters. I'm not seeing a focus in that. And a quarter class that is very hard to teach. I teach them, that's very hard to get in any depth for that. And yet you have a teacher librarian who is conversant in media literacy and research skills, which are crucial. To every bit of your social studies and science and English departments. So I guess what I would like to recommend is that you.
Before you make a recommendation, can I answer the question?
Yes.
Okay. So the library and media specialist, both the previous one, Kelly Budd, and the current one, Megan Para. Um, have specifically preferred an integrative model of their discipline versus a pullout model. So what I mean by that is that they're partnering pretty regularly with content teachers. Um, I was in here two days ago with all of the English nine classes, doing a co-taught lesson with the library media specialist and the classroom teacher. Um, where they pulled out materials and literacy kinds of tools, co-taught the lesson, mixed and matched how they did the instruction. And then had the learners pulling materials while the, the two staff members kind of collaborated to support them. In the middle level, that tends to be more intensive with the librarian going into the classroom to support the instruction going on there. Um, but they prefer, the current library staff prefers that model of integration. Versus the pullout standalone courses that used to exist in this building prior to that model. So the reason why there's not a specific entry in the program of studies is because the current library teacher does not want that as a course in, in the program of studies. In terms of the, the literacy skills, we've kind of distributed those because we have the learning goals and we can distribute and look at where those are being taught and assessed. Those have been distributed both into some middle school coursework for STEM. So if you were to dig into the actual like STEM explorations. Um, in the seventh and eighth grade design, modeling and robotics classes, you'd see those, those media literacy skills, including some research, copyrighting skills, things like that. Embedded into the coursework there, again, with some co-teaching and some use of technology to help meet those goals. And then the ninth grade, which is where that digital literacy credit requirement comes in. Again, those digital safety goals, um, literacy skills around how to use the device for research and application. Those get embedded into both the computer science class and or the uh, fundamentals of sustainability class. So a whole chunk of those learning goals is whatever hasn't already been instructed and assessed at the middle level. So it's, it's a dual approach of distributing the learning goals into some content and weaving it in, and then the libraries end up. Co-teaching with content teachers to weave in their instruction into the specific content areas.
Thank you. My experience with the, with that collaboration is that it's very, very organic. But also a lot of kids get it missed. And so I just would like to just make sure.
Yep.
That's, that there is an equity of who's getting what. It's not just a couple of teachers who believe this is important. No, this is important for everybody. You know, that's, so I, it's just.
I don't, I do not disagree with you at all. And I, I appreciate you mentioning it. It's a conversation. This is Ms. Kurr's first year in the role. She was the library media associate for the past two years. So it is a conversation that we'll continue to have with her, for sure.
I think it's important to um, point out however, the potential. If, if not what's already happening, but the potential by you utilizing the learning goals and the way you're doing that. You just described some integration, that actually can be translated across all curricular areas, actually more easily with learning goals. As a, you know, rather than the traditional setting, which most of the districts most, not all, are doing. Around throughout the state. So it is, um, it is good to have that integration, but also. Especially with the help of the LMS, I think it's harder without it.
Right.
You can now track, do exactly what Lisa was suggesting is like, okay, you, you have the data. We need to make certain that we're tracking that those learning goals are being accomplished. And I think that's what you're asking with the, raising the expectations, because that would be one of them or several of them.
Yep.
There's probably several of them that would need to be.
I think.
At specific levels, because Lisa is absolutely right. The, the foundation of so much of our kid's success is going to be in their research. And their capacity to take information in and then think critically.
Right.
And make judgments.
And access it from a variety of diverse sources. Uh, what I kind of heard you saying too, which is what I'm also agreeing with and part of what we've been working with the library staff around. Is access to the library staff and making sure that that's consistent and equitable because. Prior to the last couple of years, I, I'd say Mrs. Budd was very good at. Um, encouraging and building out that partnership and helping teachers to re-understand why that's so important. I think my concern, if we don't continue to have formal systems for that, is that you end up with the same basket of teachers who do that collaborative work. And she's, the, the current library media specialist has done a nice job growing that partnership. But to your point and where I think we'll, I want to continue to have that conversation is making sure that it's deliberate and consistent and not just a small basket of people.
Hi Forbes. I have two questions. One is a follow up to this, this topic about the library. Um, obviously, the students have, as you just said, uh, lots of different ways to access research data today. Sitting here on their phone or whatever, right?
Right.
But um, it sounds to me, and maybe I'm wrong, that a lot of the usage. Actual physical usage of the library is kind of voluntary. Did I misread what I just heard? Did I just hear that wrong? I, I, I guess what I'm asking is, is it built into coursework that students have to come to the libraries? There is, okay.
It's, it's not as robust as it probably was even five years ago. I mean, when I, six years ago, when I was a teacher. All the time, I always had that woven into my syllabus. There was research projects that included that.
Right.
That still takes place and teachers are diligent about bringing their kids in here. But a lot of the focus within the library has shifted from pulling from the nonfiction collection on the shelves. To accessing one of the many databases that the library has purchased and set up. So the usage looks different in that way. It just isn't as time consuming in terms of the physical space. As it is with the resource and connecting with the library staff.
I get that. Okay. Um, my other question takes us back to the grading thing. And maybe tonight's not the time to really answer this. We could wait, but I'm curious as to. How the grades, in whatever form they come in. Um. Um. Match, if that's the right word, uh, to state competencies. In other words, I, I'm probably way off base here, but if a student graduates as a senior with an eighty-five average. How, how does that translate in terms of the percentage of competencies that they have mastered? Can you address that some other time?
Sure, I mean, I can give you kind of a quick answer now, but that's a different kind of conversation. Sure, I mean, I can give you kind of a quick answer now, but that's a different kind of conversation. Um the states competent, if you if you're talking about the states curriculum design or they're like competencies that they give you for departments.
Yes.
Just to give you some point of reference, the social studies ones still haven't been released and the so the current draft is the two thousand and six version. Which isn't even really competencies, it's hundreds of standards. Um but the state does not necessarily track. I mean, the the SAT in theory does, but the state doesn't track. Here's our competencies. Now show us that your learners have met these. Uh what we try to look for is alignment between the grades we see being earned in classrooms on learning goals. And how those compare to the proficiency measurements of whatever the state assessment is. So we, most schools are way off, you know, the. All these learners who have As and Bs are scoring ones and twos on critical skill areas. We're trying to bring those better into alignment. Which is why a lot of the work that Heather does with teacher teams is helping them to look at how their learning goals for their discipline. Compared to the scope and sequence of whatever the state assessment is and then adjust, you know, what the power standards look like through that lens. And so we've seen some improved alignment in the middle school math. It's still not perfect, but the numbers weren't. This far apart, they were maybe this far apart and we're continuing to try to bring them closer. So we have a better sense of where learners are performing on those normed assessments. It's not perfect, but it's the closest measure that I found that we can get with what the state expects, um given their many different versions of. Standards and competencies that are out there.
So um I guess you're looking for a motion. Are you? Are we ready for a motion?
Uh are there any other questions or comments? And then, no, yes, we are.
Well, you'll have to talk it with this motion. I move that we accept. Uh the uh what are we calling this? The program of studies uh as presented minus the.
I'll second the motion.
And and thank you, Daisy. Thank you, boys. Okay, any questions or further comments? And seeing none and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay, but thank you.
Thank you. So thank you have us again.
It it's our pleasure.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So this is a conversation to that the second part of tonight's JRMCHS presentation that started really back in the eighteen nineteen school year. And we're here tonight to, I don't know, present a direction. Maybe ask for, I I have no idea what the outcome tonight will be, but we're at least going to present some data, some conversation points and and what our administrative recommendation is in terms of. The direction to take the middle high school and the district. So just as a quick recapping of kind of where we've been so far. Way back in the eighteen nineteen school year, the administration of the middle and high school levels were brought to one administrative structure. As were some other parts of the building, um library, nursing, school counseling, shared spaces were expanded. That was the year that we began bringing together the grading policies and sort of the other practices within this six through twelve building. That was a long time ago, but that was the first kind of stepping stone on the journey. That school year, the eighteen nineteen school year, the two different grade spans were still meeting largely separately. Their team leader groups met sporadically together, but it was certainly a slow start to um kind of bringing the cultures of the building together. The nineteen twenty school year was when we started to do more of the staff integration. So that year, the you the unified arts teachers in both buildings began to come together as one team. JRMSS had a program of studies passed for the first time that was separate from the high schools. That year, we brought our handbooks together. Um started meeting consistently as one cohesive staff. And then began to to expand access to high school credit bearing courses to middle school learners. The twenty to twenty-one school year, in addition to dodging COVID and the experiences there. Um we looked at adding more eighth grade opportunities for access to the high school, consolidated more of the shared resources. To just this first floor. So that's when we really started to look at the first floor being kind of the six through twelve. Everybody might need things on this place. And keeping the core instruction on the second or third floor of the building. And that was the year that we also started looking at our music and art teachers differently and looking at their specialization versus grade spans. And last year, we brought the learner support processes. Those tiers of intervention began to function much more as one unit. We introduced the partner programs of web and link, thanks to Heather Lindstad and some teachers. Um going to those trainings and bringing those programs here and then clubs and activities began to fill up with some middle school and high school learners where that was appropriate. So there's been kind of a consistent pattern to moving the cultures of the building together. This year obviously has focused a lot. I ran out of room, so I couldn't put twenty-two to twenty-three. But this year has been more about the systems with Otis, the one to four grading. Um PLC structures, doing more of that work to bring the collaborative structures more to bear. What has changed in this time, um we've c- combined a lot of staff. We are now at one-third of the stat, the. Professional and um associate level staff in this building are shared. So that's teachers, administrators, nurses, associates. We're at roughly a third, perhaps a little more than that. Um and that has increased the collaboration. We're able to build into our school system now at this six through twelve building. Um content collaboration across the middle and official grades, in addition to the team level at the grade levels in the in the middle school kind of collaborations. What has changed is improved access to the high school for the middle school when that's appropriate. Again, part of the reason why we're adding that scholars diploma column is because we are having so many middle level learners. Taking algebra one honors and geometry honors and some are taking algebra two now in the middle grades because they're able to access that more readily in their day. Um we're able to have more of them taking languages and arts and also math. It's there's a lot more opportunity there when it's appropriate. Um what has changed is improving some of the mentoring that can happen from high school learners to middle school learners. That is in its infancy still, but there's um movement. There's plans to continue growing that as time goes on. And what's changed is that our vision has become much more common and consistent. And with that, we've been able to get the middle school level jointly accredited with the high school because of some of the movement we've made together. There aren't a lot of NIES accredited middle grades. We are now one of them because again, we've come together as as one school. What has remained the same is the specific traditions at the middle grade span and the high school grade span. Nobody has desired nor would we desire to all of a sudden say there's no more transition points. Once you're in this building, you're just in it. Um we still have grade levels, special things in the middle school that nobody gets to do in the high school and vice versa. The celebrations and transitions have not changed. We've continued to welcome incoming fifth graders up to their sixth grade year. We've continued to have an eighth grade celebration, even though they're spending time on this side of the building. It is a big life moment for them to have that recognition of their eighth grade year. We've continued to keep poor instruction in separate parts of the building. So the sixth and seventh grade wings are. You know, far removed. The eighth grade wing is just inside the middle school. We don't expect middle school learners on the second floor in the high school here. We've tried to keep those core areas specific to the different grade spans. And we've held on to the middle level philosophy in the in the middle school, which centers around building teams that can circle the wagons. And support learners with their very particular middle grade um needs while pushing them, you know, with instruction and academic skill building. We haven't ditched that. We haven't paired those teachers differently. We haven't said act like little high school kids. We've kept them on a neat period schedule even when the high school shifted because those middle years are important that they have separate. Um pieces that support those those learners. There are barriers to our current state of being as JRMSS slash CHS. Um I just identified kind of three areas. The learners have an identity crisis a little bit with the middle school and the high school. Am I a cardinal? Am I an Oriole? Depends on what part of the building I'm in, which classroom I'm in, what teacher I have in the moment. Um it can be hard for a kid to develop a sense of school spirit when they're straddling two worlds and that's true in both sides of the building right now. Um and the longer term vision for success that our staff and our school district are defining for the secondary years, six through twelve. They're not consistent right now because we have two distinct identities still. Staff, again, we have one-third of our sh- our staff are currently shared. How do those staff forge connections with other members of the faculty when they. Straddle over this chasm of of Oriole versus Cardinal, et cetera? How do they participate in things like spirit weeks and the the middle school versus high school ways of doing that? Um how can they navigate data and and tools currently sometimes are still separate only because of that artificial break between the middle and high school? And families, same thing. It's hard for families. It would it would be wonderful if. As your older high school Oriole got too big for some Oriole clothes, they could pass it right on to their younger sibling. And you didn't have to worry about that again, split between the identities. Having learners in bo- in both parts of one building is kind of weird when they're not sharing the same identity, even though they're sharing so much of everything else. And systems can be difficult too. When you have to log into a system and click an arbitrary change or log in differently because my eighth grader happens to be over here, my ninth grader over here. Even though it's the same building, same administration, the information's going to the same place. Again, it's an artificial difficulty for families. The big question, how do we assert two distinct identities when we share one general space? For instance, we have one very overused Pratt. And the Pratt cannot take two identities. It doesn't have the physical space to do it. So when we walk into the Pratt, there's an Oriole on the floor, there's an Oriole on the wall, there's orange on everything. There's a big Oriole across the stage. Our middle level learners are always left out of that equation right now and they know it. That is not new. That's been forever, but what's worse is now they're one school that's constantly moving about the cabin a little bit and poor JRMSS kind of gets left out. We share one main lobby and one set of offices with a big Oriole rug as you walk in. Again, there's just no identity for the middle level right now because they're kind of left out of that. Process. How do you assert the middle identity at the same time as the Orioles with the current scheme of our building? The library is another space that is shared between the two. Again, it's difficult for this this place here. To meet that identity need for both groups and we could go on and on, shared classrooms. There's a long list of those types of things. So those are kind of the things that we're looking at right now. We're at a point where philosophically, we've moved far down a path. And now there's this wall and we have to decide what to do with it. There are also some other impetus. Reasons, I don't know what the word is for seeking a possible change. Our NIES accreditators, accreditors. Um looked at us and said, wow, you're doing so many great things, but you have an identity crisis. You should fix that. Um as the state's moving to us the almost system and how they. Take information in from schools, they're saying to schools like ours, you either need to be one school or not, you can't be both. So there's a lot of pieces that are kind of happening at once. So we sought some information and started with information collection. We put a survey out. We have seven hundred and four responses to our survey, which is a lot. I don't, I mean, Ruben, you would probably know. I don't know if there's a lot of surveys that get that many responses, but this was a whole lot of responses in a pretty short window of time.
We got some, we had some good COVID.
I blocked those. So just this building, that was a good chunk of numbers. The vast majority of the respondents, sixty-two percent were learners. Um twenty-four percent were parents or guardians, eight percent were staff. Now, the eight percent is deceiving because the staff number as a ba- a basket is a lot smaller. So when you look at the raw number, I think it was just under sixty responses, which is decent for our staff. Um and then six point four percent were community members who don't have any other kind of connection to the building at this point. So the first questions that we asked, this was generated by one of our NIES committees, were a sliding scale. Where one is not important at all and five is extremely important. So this was about the Oriole mascot. I was very surprised by this information because on a sliding scale. Is almost equal numbers, about six percent difference of people who could care less from people who care a ton. So there's a pretty big split there and then a little bit, it's tilted a little bit towards the end of the caring a lot about the Oriole. Changes a little bit when you look at the Cardinal, which nobody seems to care about. It's just the reality, it got lo- very little love in this particular survey. Um you know, sixty percent, sixty-four percent, sixty-five percent. Were tilted into that. We don't really care about the Cardinal category and then a little bit towards the other end. And then the question that kind of just cut to the chase and said, what do you want to see if we had one six through twelve mascot? The Oriole got sixty-six point two percent of the responses, sixteen point eight percent. Well, with the Cardinal. I couldn't show you the list of how many different other random ones there were in there. A lot of people are dissatisfied with birds. They question why we have bird mascots. Um there was some interesting discussion about a tiger, which is on the list, got a few votes. Um as a write-in o- option because of the orange and black color scheme, I'm guessing. Some people wanted us to do more with Mount Minatnok, so you'll see that a couple of times come up. But obviously, the vast majority of this was the Oriole as continuing the the mascot if there was a change.
The rat doesn't make it.
Rat had just one vote oddly enough, yes. So this this sliding scale, a one was one hundred percent in for orange and black, a five was one hundred percent in for red and blue. And then you could kind of skit slide yourself closer to one or the other if you didn't have a strong preference. So as this shows, about sixty percent, four hundred and twenty-one responses were all in on orange and black. Nine point two percent were all in on red and blue and then the rest kind of scattered throughout the middle.
Which mirrors.
It was a plum.
A plum.
Need a plum as a mascot.
That might actually be on the list.
Violent, vi- violet.
Yes, it is. Come combine them and that's what you get. Um this came through when you look at the color scheme here again, sixty-nine percent wanted the orange and black color scheme. For a combined school versus eleven percent advocating red and blue. Um just under ten percent said orange and blue, which is JGS's color scheme. We would never steal it from them. The only reason we have orange and blue in places now is because we have an identity crisis. So we've been trying to get as much of both schools in as many places as we can. Then we got into some naming questions. How important is the name Conan to you? Tilted towards the very important and um not a slam dunk here like I would have expected to see, but. There are certainly more advocacy for Conan than against it on this sliding scale. And pretty much the polar opposite on the Jeffrey Ringe name tilted away from the importance level of it. Um towards more of it not being super important or not caring so much. And then this is the overarching seven hundred and four response vote. On what the name should look like if we had a six through twelve combined name. Forty-six point seven percent advocated for Conan Middle and High School, so a combination of with the use of Conan. Eleven percent advocated for a combination with the use of Jeffrey Ringe Middle High School. And thirty-four point eight percent advocated for keeping the exact same names and doing nothing to change from where we are right now. Then all those other little tiny, don't even show up marks are people's suggestions for names, many of which had. Variations on a theme of whatever else is up here. So as you're the the next many slides, I'll be parsing the data a little more on this question. If it was Jeffrey Ringe Secondary School, I pulled that into the Jeffrey Ringe Middle High School category. Conan High School, Conan, Conan Secondary, I pulled those into the Conan Middle High School column, just for the ease of bringing some of those like terms together. Combined terms in the sense of math. So this next one is just looking at community members, what their preference would be. The first box is Conan Middle High School, which had forty-two point two percent of the community responses. The box right next to it is JRMSS and CHS, keeping them separate, twenty-eight point eight percent. The greenish box is some other version of a combined name, says six point six, seven percent. The little tiny blue of two point two percent is the do not combine them right in responses. The tall red sixty-eight point eight nine percent is some other, it's just all the new name advocates, whatever the new naming was. Sixty-eight point eight nine percent had selected some version of that and twenty percent was the poor Jeffrey Ringe Middle High School column off to the side there. The next box is looking at the staff responses. That first box at sixty-eight point four two percent, it's a little cutoff at the bottom, is Conan Middle High School. Right next to it is Jeffrey Ringe Middle High School at twenty-one percent of staff responses. Keeping the separated identities is ten point five three percent of staff. Nobody wanted other names of any type. And then if you looked at the people advocating for some combined name, it was eighty-nine point four percent of staff. Learners were much more of a split bag. Um Conan Middle High School just barely eked out. The existing JRMSS names by one response, so forty-five point five two percent of the. I think it was four hundred some odd learner, I think it was four hundred fifty learner responses. Yep, which is incredible, by the way, that's like three quarters of the school population.
Addition to the seven hundred?
No, that was part of the seven hundred. Yeah, they were by far the largest group. Um so pretty much evenly split. If you looked at just the Conan Middle High School and JRMSS slash CHS categories. There was seven point five percent who advocated for Jeffrey Ringe Middle High School. Point four eight percent were some other interesting combined name. Um point two four percent typed in do not combines. That was one learner. And then if you looked at all the advocates for some combined names, it's at fifty-three point five one percent of learners. And then the last category that was separated out was parent guardian responses. Fifty-seven point eight three percent of the parent guardian respondents advocated for Conan Middle High School. Nineteen point two eight percent were Jeffrey Ringe Middle High School. Sixteen point four nine percent of parents said leave everything the way it is as JRMSS slash CHS. Two point four percent were write-ins for some other combined name and then. And then all of the combined some name of any sort of variation was seventy-nine point five two percent of the parent responses. So then this is just a quick side-by-side comparison of all four of those groups. The first box is the Conan Middle High School votes. Forty-two percent, well, I'm not going to reread them, but you can kind of see where they fall, okay, that first group each time is the community members. The brown sort of second one is the faculty staff, the green is the learners and the blue is the parents and guardians. So you can see that the majority in every category was the Conan Middle High School group. Close behind in some areas and not so much in others was the J R M S slash C H S, Conan Middle High Schools kind of in between. And that last one shows the advocacy or selection for some combined name of some sort overall. Then I just captured some comments, there's not a ton of comments, a lot of notes, like, because I, I always put a generic. Do you have anything else you want us to know, any other comments? So I got a lot of notes. I grouped and numbered these comments, so this first batch of which there were fifteen comments at the time I pulled this presentation together. Are the don't change it kind of comments. So you can see some of them up here, I don't get why change it, it's been the same for years, what is changing, anything going to do? This person took umbrage to the fact that they may have just purchased some Cardinals gear and were upset that they would no longer be able to use that in the future if there was a change. Keep the school the way it is, leave it as it is. I miss the school district I graduated from, Jeffrey Ringe Middle School and Conan High School, should not be one administration, the district is not what it used to be. I mean, there's just some of, you know, some of that kind of energy out there, don't change out anything, keep everything the same. We shouldn't change, there should be a split. It's a disruption to learning areas. And the last comment, I think, was just maybe some miseducation out and about, a six through twelve school is a poor educational choice. Sixth graders are not secondary students, we used to have a terrific mid-school part of the New England League of Middle Schools, which was well regarded. Poor choices have been made, all in the name of money. We are still a part of the New England League of Middle Schools, that would not change, that's just a. This is, has nothing to do with that, so that, there was one comment up there like that, that I felt like was just maybe some misinformation out there. So there were fifteen of these, don't change it kind of comments. There were twenty-four that didn't seem like they were against any change, but specifically were not for unifying. So again, just some of the ones I pulled out, why combine the school, there would no longer be middle school graduation, which is not necessarily true, we would never advocate for that change. Keep them separate, don't merge the schools, I personally think the school should stay separate, don't combine them, I do not want our school to be combined. I'm not really sure, this next one was something about certification ranges, but in New Hampshire, it's a five through twelve content certification. Or a K through eight, so again, this would not impact any existing staff in that way. Nor would it impact their compensation or specializing or things like that. And then the last comment, I'm quite sorry that we decided to merge the schools and have them be one school, I think it was preferable before, et cetera, things like that, so. Again, there were twenty-four. Comments kind of like this against unifying period. There were twenty-one comments that were for unifying but did not like the. Options presented to them and made sure to tell us in the end of the survey. Are these the only name choices, isn't there some other name option that sounds better, none of these sound great? I still don't like the colors and I think we should have done the school mascot as our state bird. Name has to do with Mount Minatnok, change the name, the Seahawks. We should change our mascots from birds to something else cooler, because when we do sports and say, one, two, three Cardinals, we sound like jokes. Maybe we should get a mascot for the middle school also because we don't have one, I'm assuming, so there were twenty-one comments kind of like this in there. Some of them were interesting. And then there were thirty-three comments advocating for unifying, using the C M H S kind of name and scheming. The first one talks about. Keeping the Conan name, the Oriole mascot, that there's a lot of tradition and legacy, both from the founder and the achievements of the school over the years. Will always be Jeffrey and Ringe, those names aren't lost, but Conan is unique for this area. The same person said they think it's great, we're talking about this and making a decision, it's been on this person's mind since the merge began, and to be honest, even before that. It kind of bothered them that we didn't have a consistent set of mascot colors, et cetera. This next one, I think that calling the middle high school a single entity and name is an important change for the better. That more accurately represents the type of institution it is. I feel like having it be Jeffrey Ringe Middle High, or even some variation, even Conan Middle High is more important than the mascots and colors. This person has been teaching here a while, doesn't mind if they go with Orioles and orange and black, as long as both the middle and high school are represented in the name. Whatever is decided, they think the name mascot and color scheme should be the same, this will allow for better reuse and handoff of gear, thus financial management. This person was very excited to see our mascot unify the school spirit. And then the last one, which is kind of hard to read up here, best to keep the Oriole students who have already graduated will connect, it helps kind of keep alumni attached to the school. So thirty-three comments like this. My personal favorite, which didn't group under any of these, so I couldn't put it up here, was the one comment that said there are a few bad apples. But overall, this is a great school with lots of good teachers and learners, I think some middle school student put that in, it was very touching. So where we're kind of at, so that, that's the data that we've pulled from the community. Are our stakeholders to get a sense of where people's minds were at, so this is kind of presenting what things look like in the future. If we make no changes, obviously, the identity and structures remain the, the same as they are now in terms of. The physical space, in terms of the colors and trying to blend those pieces together. One kind of difficulty is that with the Alma reporting system and the state information system adjusting. We would be forced to separate back out all of our systems if we're not one school to the state. So that would mean going back to having two logins for Alma, separating out even kids who are sharing the same teacher, if there's. Middle and high school kids in the same class, separating all that out again, so there's some processes there that again create roadblocks. To creating that cohesive vision and culture. Again, there was a Niasse impact, they recommended unifying our culture to further improve our learning opportunities. We would continue to have the identity challenge we have now, and that's especially true for the middle school, there's no sugarcoating it. This building has long been very Conan centric, even when there was a clear divide. It's even more stark for the middle school now that we are doing so much more mixing and mingling. And it will remain difficult if there's no changes made to keep that cohesive vision growing beyond where it's kind of reaching its limits now. Some benefits if the decision is to make the change. Again, you've got a single identity that can start to flow through this entire building and create a six through twelve cohesive culture. Many other school districts of like size do this, Minatnok's a great local example. It's Minatnok Middle High School, they share the Huskies, they share the colors, they preserve the middle and high school grade levels, similar to what we're proposing kind of doing here. So that's just one example in the local area. A change like this would allow for the total school climate and culture to evolve together versus continuing to evolve and parallel tracks. The systems could be unified, again, to support better learning management and more consistent tools without the redundant sort of overlaps and things like that. Supports the development of continuing our shared vision for learning, and a big one that's. Maybe not represented to most people because they don't have to deal with that side of it. But for us, in inside the school, the flexibility of staff is really important, they want to be flexible, they want to work together. Sometimes with two separate schools at that state reporting side of things, it's difficult to do that in a way that meets, you know. Meets the needs of both the staff and the learners. So what we're hoping to do is bring together a shared six through twelve identity, shared values, a shared set of resources. Continue to forge a cohesive six through twelve culture and vision. And do it in a way that preserves the essential development of middle level learners and the essential growth of high school learners. Where those separations need to remain the same. No matter what the board decides to do with this presentation and information, we will not change the following. Grade-specific traditions, nobody's advocating that we stop doing sixth grade, welcome, no one's advocating that the middle school stop having step-up days. Or that we stop the eighth grade celebration, or we can the sixth grade trip to the Boston Museum, but nobody's advocating those things. Okay, those are important parts of developing through the middle grades, that doesn't have anything to do with this conversation. The middle level transition points and celebrations, again, nobody's advocating a change to those. Nobody is advocating that we take sixth graders and put them in classes with seniors, there were several comments like that, I don't know where that comes from. We already share the space, we already share a lot of the staff, we're not looking to bring sixth graders arbitrarily into classes with eighteen-year-olds. Any more than in a K through eight school, they take eighth graders and throw them in the kindergarten, we just don't do that. What we would continue to do is look for ways that high school learners who are mature, developed and looking for opportunities. Can engage with the middle level learners in appropriate ways, that has nothing to do with name and identity, we would continue to have core instruction separate like it is now. And teeming differences between the middle and high school would continue to be the same in the sense that a middle school model. Advocates a wraparound grade level team support that includes student services, that's different from the high school. Those are age-appropriate, in middle high schools, they keep those things the same, we're saying we would keep those the same too, so no matter what the board decides. Just want to be clear, those things are not going anywhere. Unless the board told us to put those somewhere. Recommendation from us, this is after looking at the data, looking at where we're at, engaging with the culture committee through the ask. We are recommending that the board approve a unified middle and high school identity. That to the state is represented as a single instructional entity, six through twelve. We are recommending to go with the generals consensus feedback of Conan Middle High School, recommending that we. Implement the Orioles and orange and black as the consistent six through twelve kind of cultural identity. And should the board agree with that perspective, this would be our proposed timeline for making the adjustments because we couldn't do them overnight. I made the boxes smaller to show the decreasing commitment of time and resources as time goes on. Next year, we would work with the business office in the state to implement the behind-the-scenes changes. Begin right away with getting rid of the different logos on the handbooks, look at what the cost would be to replace the faceplate on our new sign. Get rid of the redundant school store, whichever one that might be. Start unifying our systems, a lot of that bulk of that stuff would happen this year. And with our normal uniform replacement cycle, we would begin to phase out. Assuming Cardinals was the name that we no longer use, we would begin to phase those pieces out. I would also love to see a learner contest, there was a lot of learner comment about updating the Oriole, no matter what we do, because it hasn't been updated in. A long, long time, so creating a new version of that, so having a contest with learners would be a great way to. Get the middle and high school grades spans contributing to that process. The next school year, we would advocate continuing to phase out uniforms on a replacement cycle. Start looking at that, that school-wide kind of walls, hallways, things like that, as we're, as we're going through the painting cycle. What colors would go where to make the school identity cohesive, and then depending on the learner contest. Roll out any adjusted colors or logo from that around the theme of Orioles and black and orange. And then we would look to three years from now, kind of be finishing with that normal cycle of phasing out the Cardinal in this case. So that's what we've got.
All right, so.
And I just want to put on the record. Thank you. That in two thousand and ten, when I started in this district, I never in a million years would have envisioned myself sitting in this chair, presenting on why we should. Change the middle and high school identity, but I do passionately believe that it's the time and the right move to make at this point, so for what it's worth, I didn't see myself here either, but.
We've got a couple of years to think about this, right? Is there any discussion?
It's a lot, it's lots of change, it's the culture of our town, I mean, I've never been a big fan of. The name Jeffrey Ringe Middle School myself personally, but I didn't grow up here and I didn't grow up with it. And so it's a big shift for our community. And having the name, I'm just thinking about this, you know, having the name Ringe. Is that important to people who? Live in Ringe, is that an important item for them to be recognized in the name of the middle school? But also beyond that, the naming. I'm fine with the, the idea of combining them more academically, but in terms of athletics, I'm. Really trying to think about how to separate these kids out so that. Middle school kids are not wearing the same uniform as the. High school kids, I mean, I don't really think that should happen, frankly, I mean. There should be some way to identify the students as middle school versus high school. And you know, that's, that's a very minor point, but. I think in, in the scheme of things, we do need to focus on combining them, but also being able to identify the learners as. Middle school versus high school. Might even be helpful for staff at some, I, I mean, I don't know how to think about this, it's a lot, but I do think. Those are the things that come to my mind immediately, but I do see all of the advantages of moving. Towards combining them more, I just don't know how to really do that well. Without really upsetting a lot of people.
I can appreciate all the work that you put into this, it's pretty extensive. I think. I would offer an alternative way of looking at this. You've reminded me, your presentation, both of them have reminded me that we, this is a system. We're in a system, so if you took a systems approach to this. We can't do any, the inputs in a system are our students, we don't have any much control over who we get. We can look at the output that we want, and that's what we want our students to look like when they graduate. And you've spent a lot of time tonight talking about what happens in the middle, the throughputs, all the. Different, all that stuff, right? To me, if we look at the output. That's where our identity should be. I don't care about names, I don't care about mascots. I'm more concerned with the quality of our output. And I think that if we focus on the quality of the output, which we're doing, I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to do the best we can with what we've got. But if we do that, the, we'll get pride in the school. I haven't heard much about pride here tonight. I've heard about confusion about whether I'm an Oriole or a Cardinal or what my colors are, people, some people don't care. I think what they should be caring about is not what bird they are. But they should be caring about the quality of the education they get here. And I think that's what, that's what the identity should be. To make my little speech short.
Nick has something.
Sorry, yes, Nick. Yeah, I guess just to offer a few words. I guess, not necessarily in counterpoint, but just to kind of explain my perspective and communications on things. When I came in a couple of years ago, there seemed to be a lot of fractured identities, a lack of understanding on certain things, you know. If you look at this logo even right here, this is a newer project that came about, I believe it was a year ago. Due to wanting an option just in merchandising to be able to represent all schools due to some of this like joint identity, so that was an organic. Kind of effort, but in looking at like, working with some of the elementary schools, we have a new logo for both. J G S and R M S that have both come about in the last couple of years. There's been a lot more focus on color branding and efforts and initiatives, both in communication and other things, and I think that. A lot of what I've been hearing is that there can be. More of that pride and more of those points that are coming up through. I feel like we're coming together under a certain branch or root, I mean, as Ruben had said at the Ridge Memorial School presentation. You have your principal with like an eagle hat on, you know, there's people wearing red R M S shirts and things like that. But when we were going through this logo process to get the new logo for R M S, despite the fact that there's a giant. Red and black eagle on the center of the gym floor. There were even staff members that had said in the survey efforts that I don't even know what our mascot is. I don't know, I didn't know that our school colors were this, I didn't know that there was that piece to it. And there's been, at least from what I've heard, a lot of, you know, oh wow, this is amazing, you know, I have a. I have a branded shirt, I feel like I'm a part of a community. So I feel like, well, obviously, yes, academics and a lot of other things are very important. I think it's also, I've been able to see on the other side of things in this different view, a lot more of this kind of amazing, organic community growing. And branding, you know, even through, I've had conversations with people about like social media where it's like, oh, you know, I see. I see my colors for my school and I see my logo, and I know that that's something I really need to pay attention to because I'm seeing those colors. You know, I get a lot of requests from people at the middle and the high school level, like. Oh, do you have this logo, do you have that logo, because we have a high school crest, we have a middle school logo, we have. Orioles logo from the seventies or sixties that, you know, we don't have the original file for, we have a. Sports logo that's branded everywhere and it's not even an Oriole, it's, I'm pretty sure it's a Raven. So we have a lot of this kind of fractured here, there and everywhere. Approach to things, so for me, it's an exciting opportunity to potentially work with that. Joint branding, because then we can start promoting this cohesive community image, and it's not about Jeffrey, it's not about range, it's not about the middle school. It's about, not about the high school, it's just about everything. You know, coming together, so for me, uh, it's, it's exciting to hear about this as a communications person, because we do get that. Opportunity to really kind of brand and show who we are.
So. On a personal. Relation to it, I didn't grow up here, so I don't have the personal connection to either of the schools. But where I grew up in Northern Vermont, we. This high school. Combined. Is the same size as my K through eight. Um, we had. Eight to ten towns that had their own elementary schools. Who all combined into one high school. I couldn't tell you what my elementary school colors were, what my mascot was, no idea. But our high school. Had a football rival. With the next town. You can take a pick from anyone who grew up there. You either. Are maroon and white. Or you're green and white. And it doesn't matter which little town you started from. When you come out of high school, you fit into one of these two schools. And. I'm in my thirties and I will still claim maroon day in and day out. And I graduated. However, long ago. They having. One. Mascot, one color scheme. Helped. Because going into high school, we came from opting different colors and animals and. Then we all joined one. And we were one. Unit. That I think having. One name, one color or two colors. But having. A single mascot. It helps with the pride when you talk about where you grew up or where you graduated from. And knowing. That I didn't. Go to school here, when I first moved here. It was, oh, so you know Conan basketball? No. And then I was enlightened on Conan basketball history. And. To be honest, I'm. Basketball is not my thing, so it's not, I couldn't tell you what's happening in basketball. But I know that this area is really proud of Conan basketball. So being able to be. All Conan. I think is. Really good.
Thank you, Daisy. Yes, Ruben.
Now I would offer a blend of. Whatever was said, because I think that Forbes brings a really important point that. If even with the chain process of taking, look at a backward design approach, working on really. Helping that secondary level. Organization make these, make these transitions, become more collaborative to become, so that it can become more innovative and so it can sustain that. Pattern and, um, develop the culture in order to sustain that pattern of innovation. Culture, um, reading a good book or just read a. Good book, um. Um, The Culture Code. By Daniel Coyle and, um. He stresses, uh, the importance of, um, these, these cultures that are, um, that are, they're amazing, basically. Uh, SEAL Team Six, uh, there's a, uh. Several, several different, uh, organizations throughout the course of. Uh, the last century and into the century. And what they have in common. And so the, these strong cultures. First of all, have, make sure that their members have a sense of belonging. Uh, that they're psychologically safe, so if you're gonna have a strong team, you need to be feeling like you can. Uh, be vulnerable with other individuals, that's a psychological safety first, but it comes from that sense of belonging that occurs, so if you can. Have that sense of belonging, uh, that's very important for the, uh, growth of our. Our learners, the growth of our teachers, the work ethic, uh, sorry, not work ethic. I think our work ethic, our teachers are great, but the work, um. Conditions and their own growth in order to then come back around and then feed. And intellectually and social emotional our learners is very important. Um, interconnectedness was another theme of all these high achieving. Um, systems and teams. And so I, I bring it back, Forbes talked about that outcome. You, you have the ability to get that stronger outcome when the culture is stronger, when there are. Those shared traditions, those, um, feelings of togetherness of belonging. And belonging, this is a, you know, growing body of research, not a huge body of it right now upon belonging. And, uh, really important, so the decisions that we make. It would be helpful for them to go toward enhancing those core elements of a strong culture.
I'm surprised that you didn't get more comments like the last one or two that you mentioned about teachers and. What was that when you, uh? Great teacher, it was, somebody made a comment about great.
Yeah, I mean, to be fair, this, the. Comment field was more about questions, comments about the survey, so and that wasn't. There was nothing else on there about teachers, so I'm not surprised that people didn't take advantage to say that, but.
Yeah.
I, I understand.
But I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious here, if, if you had, had asked or were to ask. Students particularly. Uh, or learners, uh, about their. Um, how much time they put in studying? Uh, how much time in the day roughly they put in reading or doing homework? That would, you know, to, to me, now you're getting at the culture. Um. Because that's what the culture of a school should be. Partly, right? Cultures should be promoting academics. School learning.
Learning.
Learning. I think it's. I mean, basketball is important. But there are schools that get rid of sports because they can't afford sports, you know what I mean? So, I know it's important to the community and for people, and that's how they make them, makes themselves feel good. But. To me, I, I wouldn't. We're obviously different, you and I, but, um. I'd be more proud of the school. That I graduated from if, if, if I really. Worked hard and I knew the school had a high quality academic education, uh, reputation.
Forbes, if I could, I'm, I'm, I, I'm not sure where you're. I'm not sure what this, wait, wait, let me, I, I don't know how this takes away from academic pride. I'm seeing a cultural shift. To, so I guess I'm not, I don't see this taking anything away from academic pride, I'm not sure why you're saying.
No, I'm. The focus of the presentation is culture and identity.
Yeah.
Right? And most, much of what his survey was about. And was in, in terms of identity. Was symbols. Colors. Mascots. And the name of the institution.
Which came after an hour-long presentation. Of how we are, we are academically supporting our students.
I know that, and that's why I said, what, we're spending a lot of time on the throughputs. Which is terrific. I'm just saying I would go about it a little different, but that's.
I guess, I guess I'd be pleased that the hand in hand, like having, having such a cohesive. Presentation of, this is how our academics are growing and how we are growing our ones. And, and how, yeah, I guess for me, three things really stood out. In this second presentation that you tie up. One was thirty percent of our staff. Are already integrated, like this is a done deal. What we're talking about is, is do we, like, this is, this is already been, this has already happened. Okay, in just five years? That many.
Right.
Okay, and I remember when the first ones, I remember the, the horror of the first one saying you're gonna teach both, you know, just that feeling, I remember, I was here for that. You know, and now thirty percent, how many learners can you give a percentage of how many learners? Who are integrated in some way?
If you, yeah, I mean, virtually all of the eighth grade at this point, not virtually, one hundred percent of the eighth grade has a class taught. Somewhere in the high school, whether it be in art room. Where it's a class that's mingled in, whether it be with a high school teacher teaching math, whether it be with four languages. I would say of the entire middle school, probably close to forty to fifty percent. Have some academic time spent interacting with a high school teacher or high school learners in a mixed class.
I have an odd question with it. Special education in particular. Can we talk about the integration there? Because I know that there's. Both when gifted and in, and in developmental needs. Is there a good integration crossway? I think there is a staff.
Yeah, I mean, where I see the biggest, two biggest impacts of this kind of six through twelve. Integration of supports, one is in the access program, which is a social emotional part of our MTSSB system. Uh, multi-tier systems of support for behavior. So we have the same set of teachers, it's a space that's set central in the middle of the two grade spans. They serve for some portions of the day, middle school learners who have that type of anchoring need. Other portions of the day, it's high school learners, sometimes there's on, there's a floating wall between them that can be pulled shut. So sometimes they'll have drop-ins of middle schoolers on this side of the floating wall and high schoolers on this side. And then sometimes those groups, when it's appropriate, are brought together to do again, some of that tier two, middle of the road types of support, um, between those, those needs. The second area where we see a lot of that in the student services area would be the intensive learning centers, there's a lot of, of flow through of learners. Moving from this side of the building into the middle school intensive learning center and vice versa. They've done some integrated lessons together where, um, this is one of the areas the library was also involved with recently, there was a really beautiful. Um, hands-on lesson around some literature, and she had tailored it to some specific learners in the middle school ILC and their, um, IEP goals. And had some of the high school intensive learning center learners because their goals were different, supporting those learners in that same shared space. So they're even, even at that stage of intensive support, the staff have already worked out. Again, the benefits of sharing resource and interconnection together. And if I may, your comment about it being a done deal, I think hits the nail kind of on the head, it's, it's a done deal that we haven't committed to. A hundred percent, but the people living in the building have, because it's part of their lives. And just as an example, yes, thirty percent of the staff are now shared. We've, we have one office, sweet, we don't have two anymore, there's no middle school office or high school office, there's the office. We have one library, we have one school counseling center. The ship has sailed in terms of setting spaces that can be middle school JRMS identity here versus high school CHS here. The, the district's already moved really far down that path. Where we're at right now is we've kind of stranded, in this case, mostly the middle school kids. In this in-between land where their sense of belonging is, to Ruben's point, compromised, because we just haven't. Intentionally otherwise preserved space for that type of identity to take place. So. The, this is kind of a done deal, and I guess what we're asking is. Either turn back the clock and we have to kind of look at resetting those identities back and spaces back, which I don't think is the right move. Or for the sake of the learners involved as well as the staff, fully commit to the process that the district has moved very diligently down over five years. Of, of process, I think if we continue to lead people in this, well, we kind of wanna combine, but we kind of don't. I think it disadvantages the people who are living day to day in that world, and it's mostly the middle school at this point, the middle re-expands.
The second piece that's interested for me is crucial, uh, because I work with Alma. Um, at Manhawat District, I work with it every day, um. And absolute, and I taught the middle school, uh, during the November, the fall semester. And so had access to, um, what their middle high school. System. Experience was, the idea that that would be separate and difficult. This is a very complex system that is gonna make. Everything a lot better as far as cohesion eventually. But learning it is hard. And it's gonna take, take work, if Alma's saying that it's going to be harder if we keep separate. But we have to go with Alma because of the state. I get, I, this is a done deal for me, like, we can't make anything harder for the parents, the students and the teachers. This, this would make it harder if we stayed separate, so no, we make it easier. Let me ask is saying, yeah, you guys should do this. Is another plus, but truthfully, we already, if you have a system that we have to buy into. And throw everything into that touches. The entire community. We need to do what we can to make that successful. So. And my third piece was. I do believe as a librarian, that makes me a little bit of a historian and archivist, and we do need to keep Conan, that is a source of pride. Um, John Conan was pretty cool, he was kind of poking around some research, he, he's pretty cool, actually, he, he put his money where his mouth is.
He did.
Um, and, uh, and I have no problem keeping that name as far as I know, um, and the colors. You know, what else will people use for passwords in twenty years? You know, that's, that's your mascot and your colors, um. So I, I am all for this for very practical reasons, um, this, this makes very sense.
Yeah, so, uh. Are there any more comments?
I, I, I have a, a question.
Okay.
I deeply appreciate all that you said, Lisa, and it sort of. Changed my way of thinking, but I do wonder if we have. A breakdown of how the, and maybe we, I, we saw this and I just didn't register, but how the middle school. Versus the high school kids feel about this. Cause I, I'm kind of wondering if. Someone coming out of fifth grade is, is ready for that big of a jump.
I don't, I did not ask a question that was like, which grade level are you? I love this learner, basically the baskets of individuals most affected by this. Yeah.
And when you say this big of a jump, I think we need to really keep in mind that. As the. The actual education. The academic settings, the classrooms. That's, that's a constant.
Yep.
It's age and developmentally appropriate for our incoming sixth graders. They would just. Hopefully, wear the orange and black with pride and be immediately feel that sense of belonging. With the entire community.
No, I understand that, I mean, the school that I went to was kindergarten through eighth grade in one building, you know, so it's. Not the same, but it's similar, we did not have. I never went to middle school, I tell that to my kids all the time, um. So we had that identity. Um, and it was pretty solid, I'm just wondering about. The kids approaching middle school years and how they, how they feel about it or how the middle schoolers feel about it. Basically being absorbed completely by Conan. Right?
And unfortunately, I don't have any breakdown of the, the four hundred, whatever, I mean, just by the sheer number, it includes a large chunk of both. Of all our grades bands, and by four hundred fifty-seven is out of six hundred and twenty, that's, that's a large majority of the kids, but I don't have a breakdown. Beyond saying, this is the learner response.
But certainly, Conan is the brand that everyone knows.
Overwhelming, yeah, on it in the orange and black.
Alright, so we've been on this a while, Charlie, do you have that, I saw you had your hand up, do you still have a comment?
Uh, yes. First off, speaking for. My constituents, I think the major pushback on, in the, in the squeaking wheels. Are gonna be the athletic parents. And the, uh, graduates. School graduates. That still live in range. I think they'll be the most vocal. So I was wondering if there's gonna be a marketing plan as to how to explain this. Second thing is, I would be hard pressed to make a decision tonight, two reasons. Uh, one is I haven't had an opportunity. Uh, to think about all the unintended consequences. So I think I need some time to mull this over. Uh, the second reason is, I don't want this to become the focus of the delivery session once tonight, so. I wouldn't want to. Make this talking point instead of the voice. So.
Okay, thank you, Charlie, Daisy.
Um, I agree with waiting. Till we can get through. The budget. Situations, um, but I was gonna say. So I have a third grader at JGS and they, in the past year, have just redone the owl. They. The whole school got. To do a survey of which owl and one of the first. Edits of it. When I was going this way and when I was going that way. When I was going this way and when I was going that way. And none of the adults found it. It was the kids that said, um, the eyes aren't looking forward. And we all went, what do you mean? Oh, yeah, they're not going the right way. And. Then when it came to, okay, this is our logo, these are our colors, now we can order new T-shirts. My third grader. Said, I need an orange shirt, and I said, okay. Why? Because I'm gonna need orange when I go to the big kid's school. Okay. I said, you know that there's two separate schools. No, it's the big building, the, the basketball games are at. You are correct, I can't argue with your thought process, and so she's third grade already thinking she needs orange because that's what color is here. And she is totally somehow. Missed the, at the moment, there's an entire school that's still represented. But they aren't seeing it, she only sees the Conan. And so she's already saying at third grade, well, I need to have the orange shirt because. Then I'm ready for the big kid's school. Okay.
All right, so I have, have a comment, uh. Could you, uh? Get us a copy of that presentation so we can attach it to the agenda and we'll.
Yeah, I, I can add them after.
Okay, great, and I, I, I tend to think too, we need some time to, you know, process this, very much appreciate. Not only the presentation, but especially the work done over the past five years to really integrate the two schools, I think that's critical. But uh, having said that, I think that. Uh Charlie and Daisy are right, we don't need to introduce something, you know, at this point, because people just grab onto it. But obviously, you've done a lot of work and we want to respond to it and we, we will.
Thank you for the time, I know there was a lot tonight, I appreciate it.
I like the. Symmetry of your bowl or. Seltzer waters.
Oh, I was like, we're not wearing.
That's why you're in a different table.
Okay, so I don't know, maybe we should, uh, let you folks get home.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Don't be so talkative, Rachel. Sorry, couldn't help. Okay, um. Lisa, time for policy.
Ready, um Nick, would you mind putting up on the screen, um? The, or getting ready, J L F and J L D, and I'll just talk about the first one, J L C J. J L C J is about concussions and head injuries, these are all for first readings for you. Um, these are all priority required by law policies. The concussion and head injuries, we um took a little time to send on to the health staff to find out, is there anything in this that? They might, um. This, this is different from what we currently have, first of all, this is the New Hampshire School Board Associations that we are recommending on the policy committee. We sent it on to the nursing staff and they had no recommendations on changes, this looked good, good with them, so we would like to put this. Uh policy, J L C J forward without um revision as the school board association. Um, as, and as you know, any of the highlighted areas on here are areas that become removed as we. Place it through uh our system and we keep all revisions noted. Um so that one is simply, please take a look at that and if you have questions, come back with it for second reading. J L. Which one, J L F? In the next one, do have some changes, similarly, they are required by law. And they are changes from what we currently have in our policy system. Um, we like the wording on both of these policies, except for one paragraph each that I want to have you note. So if you go down, Nick, to the. Third page of this. Under C, where it says reporting child abuse and neglect, this particular um message about paragraph about the signage. We talked about this at length and did not feel that it was actually. Something quite relevant for us or that necessary, we decided it's not something we currently do. We have something, we have similar. Systems in place, we did not feel as a policy committee that this was necessary, so we'd like to remove it. So we'd like to keep the remainder of the policy intact and remove this, so as you read this for your first reading. If you have any questions on that or any concerns with doing that, it's not that we can't do it, it just felt like.
Too much.
It did, it felt like too much, if you read the whole thing, it felt like, boy, you're. Um, this seems, this seems not necessary. And so let's not. And if you go to J L D, school guidance and counseling, again, we brought this policy to the guidance department. They had no revisions for us, but we talked about it at length and would like to remove ourselves, the highlighted section here. Um of the summary report being brought to the board once a year. Again, we felt that that was redundant to what we currently get with updates about our systems and. Didn't need to be a separate. Which on March first, we always get the summary report of performance and achievement, and we get updates quite a bit in our school board. Um, whether it's through committees or through the board itself, it just, this felt redundant, and so we'd like to take that paragraph up.
And I, I mean, I guess it's reflects the committees that I'm on that. You know, I don't, I don't get any of those reports or updates unless it comes up to the superintendent's report. Um, or as mentioned in. The state of the district report. So, I mean, that's pretty much what I was asking for earlier in the evening was, was actually some kind of report so that we know. When we request these. Taxpayers to fund programs. That we can actually track their effectiveness, now I don't know what the best model is to report that. How representative. That information could truly be, but as a board member, I feel like I. I would like to know if there is progress being made or just some sort of. Heartbeat. Of what's happening in the schools. That we don't, that I don't get, being on the facilities and the finance committee, you know, we don't discuss those things.
I believe that is part of what we're going to do moving forward. Is to have a dashboard.
Yeah.
The dashboard will contain uh all the essential data that we want to view. So that the summary report. Uh doesn't do a whole lot. In terms of. Making changes to improve your progress, your achievement, your attendance, your behavior. All right, you need to get more of that information in real time, figure out what, uh. Decisions you've made and whether they're working or not, and whether or not you need to make some different decisions. So from my perspective, if we have a dashboard with these things, uh, these data points. Uh as part of that dashboard, that what we'll be able to do is that, you know, at least regular board meetings, we'll have a quarterly review. Of the data that we have, some of the data changes. Uh quarterly, some of the data changes semi-annually, some of the data only changes once a year.
And Charlie, can I just ask that? I, I seem to remember discussions of a dashboard going back a long time.
Yeah.
But we don't. Yeah. I, I have to say, you know, I have always found discussions of performance and achievement. Well, uh, some of the best parts of being on the school board, because no matter how it's raised, whose question. It always involves some response that, you know, is enlightening in terms of how we're measuring, what we're trying to measure.
I absolutely agree, but I don't think it should be a summary report. And I don't think it should be annually, I think it needs to be. More frequent and the data for, for all of those things up there doesn't change that frequently.
Before you, Daisy, before you go, first of all, uh to get back to the policy, this is specifically addressing the effectiveness of the school counseling program. So. I, I have, I have another thing to say about, we has it, but for this. This is a very specific niche that's not going to address that bigger question.
Okay.
But to that bigger question, so this goals committee is tiny, right, there's just a couple of us on it. And every three months, we get this summary, we get. Line by line, going through the strategic plan of behavior and attendance and achievement and P L Cs and, and facility, all of these come in. Maybe this goals committee is ridiculous, maybe we shouldn't be having two or three people sitting for that quarterly, maybe this should be a board meeting. Quarterly. For Ruben to say, here is where we are, principals to be able to come and say, here's some exciting things happening in it. You know, I feel, I, I feel like the goals committee was neglected for quite a long time. And now it's quarterly, but it, but there's just two or three of us that come and sit in a room and get to hear you talk for an hour about. Everything you guys are saying. Now, it's a summary, it's not, we can ask detailed questions, but Ruben knows this stuff. Okay, he, he's got those pieces, they're there. And so maybe what needs to happen is instead of. And I'm not trying to get out of the committee. But I gotta tell you, maybe it makes more sense to have a quarterly board meeting of. Where's our strategic design happening, tell us our goals, we want to focus on behavior now, we want to focus on achievement. And that's what I'm hearing, something that needs to be broader and more cohesive and, and often.
Yeah, just something, I feel like. Um, you know, there've been incidents in the news where. Uh, you know, the news is scary, it's a scary place, but I feel like. I need. To be informed a little bit more, not on a detail level. By any means in terms of, you know. How many learners, what, whatever, you know, I, I just need to know whether or not things are. Which direction things are going, whether or not teachers feel safe is something that's come up recently. In my world and, and how's these programs that we're. Creating, how they're working, and I understand they may not work right out of the box, which is fine, but you know, how are we tweaking them? How are students responding to them? I feel like I need more, and but, but your, what your point is about. That you're getting this through the goals committee. If there's a way to disseminate that to us, that's great, if there's a way to just have that presentation delivered directly to the board, that's fine. One way, one or, or another, I feel like I need. Get my teeth into it a little bit more.
But I think it'd be fun to record that, we could do that quickly.
We do that, I mean, in the interim, you know, we could. Connect. And like, they can give us, go through. Things in detail without a time, you know, restraint, so people need to digest things over a couple hours. But I'll be, you know, rather than just a quick. You know. Uh and, and ask questions, you know, and uh that would be fine too. At least to kind of. Get your, uh what you need. Get you to a point of feeling like, okay, I'm at a baseline of, of what I need for information to go on here.
Yeah, okay.
We can do that, we have a quite. Quite an extensive view of course.
Thank you, thank you.
As the. Chair of the communication committee. And somebody enlightened me on this dashboard. And what that entails, what it may look like.
So. Year or two ago, um. When COVID put a, a little bit of a damper on, on some things, but also helped us to realize some other issues. So, uh Leslie and I have. Been uh researching or had taken some time to research other schools and what their dashboards look like, what they, you know, what they had for graphs and so forth. And then how could we go about doing that well, so that we have good graphics, that we have the right information? Um, and then. Uh, so we do have, we, we purchase something called Crystal Reports, which is something that Leslie is very familiar with, can make the right graphs. You, you can import data in, can do things uh fairly quickly, as long as the feeding systems. Are accurate and provide and, and are going to sync well. So that got us into exploring our systems and like, for instance, Alma, being part of the importance of, of. Transitioning to that from web to school is that web to school. Um doesn't play well with a data dashboard, uh maybe the program itself. Could. But by no means. How it is constructed within our school district over the past ten or so years. And so that, um, that along with Otis, along with, um. The software that we're using for uh activities and athletics and all that. We're working right now to just clean them all up and make them flow really nicely so that we can. The dashboard's easy as part, but part of what Charlie said, the dashboard updates. So it's not just, all right, it's quarter, we're gonna try to get all this information from all over the place we needed to feed, and so, uh. We uh know that that, so look, in order to do that. Alma's a huge piece of it, of course, all that data gets reported directly to the state, maybe the system that does that. We need a system as well that does something very similar into our crystal reports, and if that's not as robust a software as we need, or we think it is. Um, we can go and look at something else, but we needed something else that would, would be able to provide crisp data reports that we didn't have. Google isn't sufficient for. For what we're looking for. So. I mean. Right now, ninety percent of what Leslie's doing is making sure the implementation of Alma, she's leading that whole process. Uh which involves all of their scheduling in the high school and everything, that it's nice and clean going into next year. We know going in that it's still gonna be issues whenever you implement something, but we want, but we're trying to make sure that it's. Going to be as clean as possible and as user-friendly as possible, um so. That will make all of our work. Better. So, a data dashboard might have information on, or would have information on state assessment, on. Uh A P examinations, on uh perhaps quarterly. Average, you know, reporting of how kids are doing within, you know, our math, literacy, maybe goals, we could even have, I mean. You wouldn't do this on a dashboard, but you could, you know, start reporting on specific learning goals, or maybe we have some specific learning goals that we're interested that we want to highlight or something, I don't know. Um, I think also data about uh graduation rates that wouldn't change, that would be an annual type of situation. Uh data that is on participation in. Uh extracurricular activities, co-curricular activities, athletics versus non-athletics, how is that discipline? Might be on there, we'd have to talk about that, that piece right there, when we get a little closer as to what we want to look for, but. Um, we could also even discuss maybe some, you know, correlation data. Um, we noticed that. This population. Of learners uh tends to be doing really well and they're involved in these efforts right here, so. Do we want to put in a kind of a, a, a study together to find out? Whether if we increase this, you know, participation in some sort of extracurricular or. Um STEM activity or music or, or whatever that is. Um, does that leave, does that correlate, I mean, does it cause completely, but does it correlate? With higher achievement, because the outcomes as Ford has mentioned is really, you know, is really what we're looking for.
Yeah, I would love to see correlations in class size.
And many in both academics.
You throw class size on on that report as well.
Nice to see right away.
Yeah.
I would love to.
Attendance, attendance, things of that nature, because then some of these things, and you might even have a dashboard that you can drill into, that would be nicer, but. You can have something a little more sophisticated, but you could also have something really. Like you can create snapshots for families for like, hey, did you know that? Uh, if you missed ten days of school, you know, you're this likely to not do as well or something, you know, whatever those. Those thresholds are that we have. We need to do, can we get a lot of that data or all of that? Yeah. It, but it's me asking Ken, then me asking someone else, someone we need it so that it just flows. The data flows into our system, we're not spending weeks to get one report. And that will then, and that's also necessary to then aid our PLC work. Yep. Because you don't have a professional learning community without continuous. Data in front of you, some of that is homegrown in a sense within a classroom. But a lot of it has to do with more district-wide assessment. Or discipline, some some sort of recorded information that is happening.
Okay, so great discussion stimulated by this, uh, policy. And, um. Everybody's busy, including the people who track the status, and yet clearly this is something that the board cares about, so. Let's see how we can. Explain. Yeah. It's getting late and I don't, we don't want to wear ourselves out before Wednesday. So thank you for that update, Lisa. Why don't we go through board committee updates and try and go through quickly?
I'll see committee met, look at. And the goals committee met, and we got some good updates on things that are going well and things that are struggling, and now we figuring out how to disseminate. Information is a good, good next step.
When when did Paul's meet, I should know that one.
Last week or the week before.
Yeah. Yeah, last. Not in the storm week, the week before.
Last week of January, probably. Okay, and policies obviously met.
Uh, communication met and I am the new chair. Um.
Thank you.
And we're just. Working on getting things more. Cohesive and. Communicative. Um, education committee. Is bumped until next week. So I don't have an update on it.
Can I interrupt? I just have one more policy thing. Um, the next policy committee meeting, I believe, has been bumped a week and will now be on February twenty-third. For the record, February twenty-third, four thirty. That's for policy, thank you.
Good, thank you. And, uh. What about finance?
Finance hasn't met since the last report. Uh, we'll be meeting on the third Thursday of the month.
Okay.
What was the name of that committee, John, that you and I were at, wasn't that a finance committee meeting?
Oh, facilities.
Oh, facility, okay.
So we did a facilities committee meeting last week of, uh, January. Steve, uh. Jordan. No, I'm kind of. You know, who I'm talking about.
Steve Horton.
Steve Horton, Steve Horton wasn't there, uh, we didn't really get too much of an update, but John assures me that he will be there. Uh, or he's gonna ask him to be there two weeks from from today on the twentieth. Uh, also, John. Has been working, I believe, with Ruben to update. The list of ongoing projects that need to be done here in the district. And we have a a pretty good report that John put together about a month ago. But we've been taking from, I think it's the final page of that report, there is a list of future. Or projects that need to be done, but that list was somewhat incomplete, and I believe that. I've seen since then a, uh, a spreadsheet that has, or at least a table that has some additional items on there. And there is a question that we raised at the facilities committee meeting as to. How we communicate this to our public and whether we can put a page listing ongoing needs in our. Annual report to be prepared prior to the. March fourteen, uh, vote.
Yeah, so in the annual report, um, we're keeping the facility, John wrote pretty concept comprehensive. Uh, update as to what's happened in this paragraph on each. On each fix, I guess you could say. Um, and then a list of other things, we figured that in that annual report, which is not the most read. Document in the world, but if some people do go through it, that you'd have something documented that, hey, we're. Mentioning these sort of things that the general areas that we need to work on, it's not a comprehensive list, but it's, it's an idea, it's quite.
And it won't have prices.
It won't have price or just just stuff, but, um, the. Wednesday, uh, I plan to put some, I will not be live document of what we have been working on, but just some snapshots.
Okay.
Of the spreadsheets and the categories and the work that's happening, um, some, some. Numbers, but more of just an explanation of of what we can expect. Really, we should not go live with a document that a facilities committee hasn't adopted, and then, you know. Uh, at least a concept, understanding numbers change, more information comes, you have to change the. Information that's in there sometimes, like, oh, these actual windows, you know, as we started working, were better than what we thought, or some of that, in fact, you wouldn't want to. Do needless work, and there's other areas like, oh, we had, you know, never thought about. I don't know, some sort of.
Sure.
Uh, tank in a leach field or something to that effect, but. But basically a structure that gives you a pretty good understanding of timing of what things seem to be. Uh, based a lot off the engineering report that we got last year for term. We are linking in the process of linking information from that report, so people can just click on the. Topic and be able to read and see what they're talking about. Um, other quotes and things, well, we wouldn't put quotes.
So, but 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 the point is that whether we liked the behavior or not, we did hear a pretty strong message. From the public, in particular from our selectmen, that they didn't see a. A, a, uh.
Capital improvement.
Yeah, capital improvement plan, exactly, and what we're doing is showing them that we have been doing much of the work. To establish a capital plan, we just haven't put numbers on it and started putting money away. And the reasons for that, I don't think we need to go into, you can touch on them if you want, Ruben, but we've discussed them ourselves here. We don't want our capital improvements to be competing with our programs, so for other aspects of our budget and. Does Nick?
Yeah, I'm kind of hearing, uh, I guess recurring theme that we kind of keep bringing up in these different conversations. And I wonder if. There could be a broader conversation at some point about how maybe we address this moving forward. It's seems like we have a lot of these really great functioning committees that are doing a lot of really great, amazing work, they're having a lot of really productive conversations. All these things are happening. But we have certain board members saying, oh, I feel really left out of the loop because I'm not on this committee, I'm not getting this information, only the people in the committee are really getting it. And, you know, maybe we have board minutes, but they're really basic and they're not really delving into those details. We have some that are, you know, more broadcast, live streamed, put out there, people can watch them if they want, but you're having to watch a multiple hour meeting. You know, we're talking about how there's been all this work done on a capital improvements plan, or some things very similar to it, but it hasn't. Gone out to the public yet because we're, we're very much focused on how it's being worked on in the committee. So we have certain committees that are, you know, policies got all these great deliverables that show up on the agenda. Other committees, it's. We're, the most discussion we have is whatever we have during this board committee update section, which usually. It's at the end of the meeting, you know, we're looking at nine forty-five, we're saying, hey, let's get out of here, but so we're rushing through some of these points in certain cases. I wonder how we can, as a. Board, as committees, as a district, work on better reporting. Not just in the board meetings, but even to the public, so that we're actually getting this information out there. Because I feel like we're doing a lot of work trying to explain, like, oh, yeah, we're doing this, it's just happening here, it's happening there, it's happening at that meeting. So I wonder, I don't know if we wait to have this conversation until. We go through, you know, elections, because I've, based on board members, we generally will do like committee reassignments and things like that, but I wonder how we can be more. You know, we talk all the time about like education committees, we have all this productive data, all the stuff that's being shown, but like nobody's seeing it beyond. You know, if you're watching a video or, you know, reading something, so. For me, uh, looking as both the school board secretary and as the communication coordinator, how do we better? Let people know what's going on so that we're not. You know, burying it at the end of a meeting, you know, we've lost half of our online audience. And it's very quick snapshots, you know, we met on this date, we're meeting this day again, we discussed this one thing. Have a good night.
Okay, well, thanks. And Daisy, yes.
Um, so to add to that, part of. I think the board disconnect from the committees is. I say simple when I know from a communication standpoint, it's not always this simple, but. Like the education committee, we see this amazing. Presentation. And then that's it, you can't get that presentation again to share to somebody else, that it's. A lot of the presentations, I think, need to be. Sent to the whole board.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, I think those are, those are good ideas, I think the comments, uh, that you made, Nick, and. That others have made, I I think there's work we can do and need to do to. Share the information we have, and we need to be thoughtful because. That you, there are times when one needs to be thoughtful about the timing of information, what information is appropriate. What information can be misunderstood. You know, not not to focus overly on those things, but we just. Wellness committee.
I think we've actually. The boards met since our last meeting, but we do have an update anyway. We have a meeting. With members of the wellness committee, Cornucopia Project in Peterborough, two of our Conan. Teachers. And some members of a Jaffrey, uh, climate initiative to talk about school gardens. And specifically at the high school. And we have a meeting set for that February fifteenth.
Fifteen, yeah.
Cornucopia is offering to write a larger grant. To write us into a larger grant to help fund. A school garden. So we will get more information about all of that.
Yes. Thanks for that update. So by next time we meet, hopefully we'll have some further update.
Yeah.
All right. Public comments too.
All right, we still do have a couple people, um, online, so just to quickly throw the, uh, policy up there again. Um, you know, same, uh, things you did as last time, raise hand feature bottom of the screen, first name, last name, town or residence. Be mindful of policy. I guess while we give people a second, one little fun fact that I wanted to kind of say earlier, um, speaking to Daisy's point about the, uh, Jaffrey grade school colors and the. Uh, middle high school, um, and us kind of having this orange and blue right now, is I was talking with Susan. And she said that the reason why JGS is orange and blue is because they took the orange from the high school and the blue from the middle school. And they took that as part of their identity, so it's interesting that there's that like. Child comment of the connection between the two, because that was exactly how they were chosen, was the the elementary population was like, we want those because it speaks to our middle high, so.
Knew that she wanted orange because that's what the big kids wear.
Yeah, and in my house, we got the, everybody got one color one year, another color the next year, so everybody's got an orange, everybody's got a blue, so. Like I said, we don't have anybody, uh, making a public comment at this time, so.
Okay, very good. Are there any board matters?
I would like to make a recommendation for consideration. I have been, I was a trustee of another board. That met twice a month. And their model was, one meeting was designated as business. And the other meeting that month was designated as board matter type of things, this type of conversation. Where you bring together what the committees are doing, so it was more the small groups coming to the group. And they were designated specifically for that, and I would like to bring that forward for consideration, that we now. One month a meeting where the superintendent does a report and then, and we do our business and our manifest, and another meeting is simply. Who met this week or who met this month, give us a report, give us some sort of presentation that's formal, presented, powerpointed. You know, here's some outlines, but. Instead of having, you know, all the business every, every time, maybe we could think about a model that breaks this up, so that we are bringing it to the public. In a, in a. Cohesive and planned, organized way. That's, that's my thought for consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or suggestions on that?
Just your eyes.
No, I just, I think it's a.
I, I.
Good idea.
I think the only. Drawback, which it doesn't take very long to do the consent agenda, but when our consent agenda. Contains. Hiring regulations, we don't want them to have to wait a month.
Money, absolutely, the the consent agenda would still have to be, but we don't spend a lot of time discussing that.
All right, so I think it's a good suggestion, something for reflection, and we'll, uh, continue to process it. And I do think. And this is, you know, my personal take on it. I do think that what we're talking about. You know, requires us to make some changes. We're looking at the the data dashboard, we're talking about delving into a lot of stuff, it takes time. We take time for Ruben, we take time for Equilibrium's data from. But also from this board, and it's, it's pretty late for us to be going home, and so some kind of a change in our model, maybe, uh.
Consider also. Changing non-level. Start or meeting six. And then if we need to go to non-public. To the afterwards.
And. Maybe with. We're right at the end of a yearly. Board cycle, if that's what you want to call it, that maybe if we're going to change things. This is the time to figure out what we want, what it's going to look like, so that come mid-March, when. It's a new term, we have whatever. Idea we're gonna have going into it.
It's a good, good point.
It's a good, good point.
Yeah, right, and I would like to uh. Thank Charlie for re-upping. Putting his name on the second time. And at the same time, I'd like to apologize for having done the same thing. Can we get a motion?
I second the motion.
Okay. Got a motion to second all the favors.
I.